Yeah, doing it now. I'm turning on the recording.
Just let me know when.
Okay.
Okay, we're on, we're on, Buna.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening and welcome, everyone. We're gonna do a couple of things before we start the meeting. We need, I need a motion to move the subcommittee meetings to the top of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Can we call roll call first?
Of course, of course.
Thank you. I'm prepared to do that now. Commissioner Fine.
Present.
Vice Chair Chima.
Here.
Commissioner Dangerfield. Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Harker.
Present.
Commissioner Lindheim.
Present.
Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Gosch.
Present.
Commissioner Jiggo.
Here.
Commissioner Optin. Commissioner Blake.
Present.
Commissioner Polk. Commissioner Malvito.
Present.
Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Ho.
Here.
Commissioner Lutzker.
Here.
And Commissioner Mizell.
Here.
Thank you. So I need a motion to move the subcommittee reports to number to just after the election of the chairperson.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. I'll make a motion to move the subcommittee reports to just after the election of the chair.
Thank you.
I seconded.
So many seconds. Take anybody.
Okay, thank you very much. And I need one more motion, which is to allow Karen Garo- Bernali pronounce her name for me, please. Garokey?
Karen Prolek.
Okay, thank you. To be allowed to speak for five to seven minutes from the Transportation Commission on Work Dot. So I need that motion as well.
I'll move.
I think you have to finish the first one and then go to the second.
I thought we finished the first one. I didn't any know, any, oh, we need to call roll. Thanks, Margaret. Call roll, please, on motion number one. Sure. Commissioner Fine?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chima? Yes. Commissioner Dangerfield? Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Harker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindheim?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Gosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggo?
Yes.
Commissioner Optin?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk? Commissioner Malvito?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Ho?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutzker?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizell?
Yes.
The motion stands. Vice Chair Chima. Okay, on the second motion, I think we need to take roll call. I do believe that we had, we made the motion and had a second, which was to allow Karen from the Transportation Commission to speak for five-
We had a-
Seconded.
We had a, who seconded it?
Yeah, we had a motion that was seconded, I don't think. So can we have a, I think Gosch did make the motion and did someone second it?
Hyde seconded.
Thank you. But thank you very much. I'm calling, I need to call roll on that one, Vice Chair Chima?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner Fine?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chima?
Yes.
Commissioner Dangerfield?
I'm sorry, I, I joined late. What's the motion?
The motion is to allow Karen from the Transportation Commission to speak for five to seven minutes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Harker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindheim?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Gosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggo?
Yes.
Commissioner Optin?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk? Commissioner Malvito?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Lutzker?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizell?
Yes.
All right, motion stands, thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Ho says yes as well.
Oh, I didn't, oh, okay, thank you.
And Vice Chair Chima, may I interrupt for one second? Shamika, if you could bring Izzy Ramsey into the panelist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Let's go to public comment. David, you're gonna let people in?
Let me see, I cannot do that, Shamika, you're, I'm not co-host yet, so I'll need you to let anyone have their hands up.
Okay.
And there are no hands up.
Yes, there are no hands up, thank you, I'm multitasking.
Vice Chair Chima, there's no, no hands up for public comment.
All right. Let's do approval of minutes for the meeting of the 13th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. This is Commissioner Dangerfield.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, who seconded the motion, Vice Chair Chima?
Alicia Hart.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harker.
Thank you. Let's take roll call, please. Sure. Commissioner Fine?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chima?
Yes.
Commissioner Dangerfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Harker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindheim?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Gosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggo?
Yes.
Commissioner Optin?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk? Commissioner Malvito?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Ho?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutzker?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have an election tonight, so I need a motion, please, to re-elect Nathan Mizell as chair.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
It would be better to set that on neutral terms than to prompt any voting for me or anyone else.
Oh. Okay. Um, David, any advice on this? I thought, um...
Someone should, someone should make a motion for who, or a nomination for the chair position. I think that's all that Commissioner Mizell is asking for, someone to make a nomination.
I'll nominate Commissioner Mizell for chair. Can I get a second?
I second that.
Roll call, please. Roll call? Need it. Commissioner Fine?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chima?
Yes.
Commissioner Dangerfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Harker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindheim?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Gosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggo?
Yes.
Commissioner Optin? Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk? Commissioner Malvito?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Ho?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutzker?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion stands. Nathan, before I turn this over to you, we're gonna take the subcommittee reports next, and Commissioner Malvito has to leave at seven, so can we have that subcommittee go first, please? And it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and, and just for commissioners in the public's clarity, I have forgotten to mail in my signed affidavit for completion of the chair training. I apologize for that error and oversight on my part. I can't tell the commission confidently that I had completed the training before the 90-day deadline. I just slipped my mind to mail in the letter. I mailed my Mother's Day card, I mailed my grandma's birthday card. I forgot the affidavit, but glad to be back and thank you for your trust. So, yes, we can move straight into a report from the community engagement subcommittee and bring from Commissioner Malvito.
We have a three-part report and Hector's gonna lead off.
Okay, sounds good.
Good evening, folks. Yeah, sorry, I have to hop off. I will, I do plan on rejoining, but it will be a little bit after seven. Apologies for any inconvenience that this has caused, but I'm very grateful to all of you for moving this up. So, some of the questions and maybe conversation that I'd be really interested in this group discussing and maybe inviting Nick Jr. as well to be a part of this discussion is what the community engagement process is looking like, at least the parts that are not the community survey, the two of which that I'm talking about right now are the listening sessions and the town hall. I, some of the discussions that we've had about the listening sessions is not only, you know, happy that we were able to include the Latino community as a, as a separate, you know, group that can have a specific listening session, but also would be really, really interested to also including listening sessions for API community and the LGBTQ plus community as well as communities of color who are LGBT. Some of the questions that we have also are really about, you know, what the format of these listening sessions would be and what the outcome of them are. I, I, I think, I, I'm not alone. I'm also here with our fellow, my fellow commissioners in the, in the engagement subcommittee that are still a little bit hazy on what the details are. What are the questions? What are the expected outcomes? And also, how can we, you know, as experts in our community and engaging our specific communities, can we be involved in this process? In my work in Contra Costa County, I'm a part of a host table that is in the process of establishing the Office of Racial Justice, sorry, Racial Equity and Social Justice, and we have been doing listening sessions for about two months, asking two very simple questions. You know, what is your experience with racial discrimination? Or racial inequity in Contra Costa County? And the second question is, what would you like this office to do? Over the course of these two months, we've had many listening sessions. We've had with over a hundred participants in multiple languages, and we have had to really think about the process because we're asking people to really open up about something, right? And a listening session about police, about policing in general, is a huge, you know, linchpin for what could be either a successful listening session or a non-successful session. To keep it short, you know, we want, as, as a member of Latinos Unidos, for instance, we would want to be a huge part of this process and not just the deployment of these listening sessions, but in the recruiting of members of the community so that it's a robust process, but also in the creation of the questions and what kind of support we're willing to offer our community members when they attend these listening sessions. Not so it's transactional, but so that we're able to provide a follow-up. You know, we're asking people to come in and share their experiences, maybe about policing or how they've experienced policing, or how they have been involved in the criminal justice system. And without this relationship, you know, we're really just using our community members for data, and that's not something that I'm willing to do. So, I really, really, I want to invite, I guess, Nick Jr. to either maybe answer some of the questions that I just asked, or maybe engage in a dialogue about this, but we're really, really interested, particularly myself, in getting the ball rolling on these listening sessions since they are coming up and, you know, we want to make sure that they're done well. And I don't know if my fellow commissioners and subcommittee want to fill in with maybe anything on this, but...
Commissioner Fine, you're still on.
The community engagement subcommittee has really tried to stay on top of the municipal legislation, which frames the work that we're doing, and based on the July 14, 2020 omnibus package, the reimagining process is about a whole community, and it also emphasizes in the language the centering and elevating of Black, Latinx, LGBT immigrants, AAPI, many victims of harm. And so we want to be committed to that and ensure the task force has a role in make, ensuring these groups are able to have listening sessions within their specific communities. And the city's been quite clear from the outset that it is to be robust, transparent, and inclusive. And I think that the citywide survey and the way that we were able to do the input and broaden it is really an example where the task force is vital in participating. So as far as the next steps for the community engagement process, on last Friday, we, a letter was sent, and we're asking for specific information. We want a copy of the timeline that was put on the shared screen showing what the schedule is currently, and if it's been updated, have that provided to us so we know exactly where we stand with that. We also talked about in the letter that different diverse demographic communities must have an equal opportunity to meaningfully engage in this process. And by that, that means people can access listening sessions. Not everybody has digital devices in order to participate, and so we're gonna have to make sure there's some way to bring communities together. And at the same time, that there is safe locations and safe space because not only are people sharing very vulnerable information, but we may even need to have trauma and foreign services available so that there is some way to assist people if they need that kind of service. There were a couple other things that we noted, you know, with some groups, and we're hoping that the AAPI task force members can also talk with the National Institute as we've set up a time. And this is to address not only the overall listening session, but we have particular subgroups, for instance, with LGBT, we've got homeless LGBT youth, many who are of color, transgender women who have a lot of problems walking while trans. And we also realize that this is, it is there out in Berkeley, and that even the bright research for someone that like Holly Josie does have experience in this area. So hopefully, between what we're putting out here and what we're asking for, which is a timeline and outreach and engagement plan, and the questions that will be used for town halls, for listening sessions, will be shared in a way not only to get task force members involved, but also to integrate with the larger SCU process, because research development associates has their focus group questions prepared and has an outreach and engagement plan, both for diverse populations and for provider groups, and it's very informative. And we want to see that kind of work shared with the task force here so we can gather all this input. And I think at the end of the day, what we're hoping are, we're informing structural and individual forms of policing in the city of Berkeley, where diverse groups get to inform how they can be served. And we're also trying to figure out how we can have culturally safe and responsive practices for each of these groups by having their own participation in their own listening sessions. So that's like what was encapsulated in the letter. Amy, do you want to talk?
Sure, thank you. Okay, one other element that we'd like to introduce from a community engagement standpoint is the, the model or the concept of violence interrupters. And so the model of violence interrupters, you can definitely learn more about this from, if you visit cureviolence.org, but the, the basic model is first to detect and interrupt potentially violent conflicts, prevent retaliation, mediate ongoing conflicts, and then follow up, work, workers or in community who is engaging in this way would follow up with conflicts for as long as needed. The second step would be to identify and treat high-risk, high-risk, or to reduce the highest risk, if you will. And that begins with trained culturally appropriate outreach workers to assess highest, the highest-risk individuals, if you will, or, and develop relationships that then will begin to change behaviors and the, and third, to provide treatment. And then the, the final element of violence interrupting is to mobilize the commu-, the community to change norms. And this would include, you know, whenever violence occurs, workers organize a response, organize community, so coordinate with existing and established, you know, tenant councils, neighborhood associations, and then spread positive, positive norms. Here in the Bay Area, we have historically done this, just intuitively, from something as grassroots that originated like long before my time. One example of that could be the, the Black Panthers, who you, who used to transport elders from home to medical appointments, or offer free breakfast programs. More recently, there is a group called Compassion in Oakland, and also a group called Asians with Attitudes, who are community watch groups and have in Oakland patrolled Chinatown area to protect our Asian-American population who has been victim to attacks as a scapegoat during the pandemic. So these are just examples of how are, how the Bay Area has historically enacted violence interrupting methods, and that's something that we would do well to implement here in Berkeley.
I don't know if people had questions about any of the work we did, but that was generally everything that we talked about this week.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you all for that report, and it's really making me think of, you know, a, as, as a API person, of sometimes the tension in our people of color communities of being victim of violence from, from many sides. And I'm just wondering, you know, in these conversations, how we incorporate and bring people into the conversation while also educating them. Like Abby, everything you just said right now, you know, that sort of envisioning of, I feel like so many times, listening sessions are important depending on who you're talking to, when it's folks who've never been heard before, it's a different kind of conversation versus folks who might have some power and who might come to learn of this process later down the line and then feel like they haven't been asked or excluded, yet they all, what they need is some amount of bringing along with us. Like they're not, you know, what we talk about, meeting people where they are at. So, I'm just wondering, you know, I'm happy to maybe go out to like University Avenue, for example, and talk to some of the South Asian store owners, but I would love some, I guess, some guidance and some talking points or a partner. I don't know if like Abby and I can go together and have some of those conversations where we can, you know, bring in the community connection and the identity connection, but also bring in somebody who's from the neighborhood, who can speak to how this work impacts them or the sort of vision that you're talking about. So I'm, I'm trying to think of those kind of creative ways, and if, if folks want to partner up or do something like that, especially with the survey as a tool to start those conversations, I would be excited to do that, now that I'm fully vaccinated as of today, to be able to have those conversations. So, I just wanted to put that out there and see if, you know, other folks want to sort of think about the folks who are kind of in between. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all the thoughtfulness you're putting into this. Please also bring your comments to the Berktot conversation when they present their plan. I think it could really benefit from your insight into how they might do their public process, so, thanks.
Commissioner Ho?
Hi, thank, yes, thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Love hearing about how, the work that you all have done already. And, and I'm sorry if I missed something, but it sounds like we don't have a lot of clarity on what the listening sessions are gonna look like, including a list of them, or maybe I, I may have missed something, so I apologize. But I probably did miss something, and one comment that I would make is, in thinking about how people would identify in going into a listening session, so there are going to be situations like if you're a victim survivor of intimate partner violence or sexual assault or trafficking, where you might need a different kind of space to talk about your, what you experienced, if you're comfortable doing that. So if we are going to really, how much this commission focuses on alternatives, you know, or reimagining and thinking outside the box for those particular areas, then I think that kind of listening session would, would maybe look a little different, would be a partnership with an advocacy agency that specifically kind of for that population, if that makes sense.
Subcommittee members feel free to respond.
Oh, yeah, we, that came up today. In fact, that all the listening sessions have got to be, have trauma-informed practices in place and people available, and also to be able to go into breakout rooms with people individually if they need to talk and don't want to talk in the group, and also need support from people who are trained. And...
If I could just-
Yeah.
So, I think from my experience with these listening sessions that I've been a part of, it's, it's crucial to develop sort of a framework for them. From my experience with uh these listening sessions that I've been a part of, it's it's crucial to develop sort of a a framework for them to build some kind of consistency. In the outcomes of these listening sessions, but also giving uh the hosts of these listening sessions. Whatever partner organization that may be, the flexibility to adapt to the needs of the people that are in the room, right? So if if I'm inviting four or five different individuals to share their experiences with with violence or policing in the community. It it will take, you know, it's going to be really my relationships to those people that are the buy-in for them to want to share. Uh, and I need to be able to provide them resources so that they don't walk away feeling like, again, like this is some transaction. Um, but also if something does happen and then they're sharing, they are asked to revisit traumatic events. Uh, that they are also supported in that because we are really, I mean. Again, this is all kind of speculation because we don't really know what the questions are for the listening sessions. Um, so I I guess before I I have to hop off, I I'd really like. If there could be maybe some clarity around what the purpose and uh questions and framing of the listening sessions that make you thinking about. Because they may have already thought about all this stuff, uh, and we might be reinventing the wheel, but uh, just, yeah, open to some clarity around that.
Yes, since we do not have that agenda for them to speak today. Um, not sure they'll have it come, but we certainly can have that item and that question. Um, agenda as for our next meeting and for our next conversation with the right group.
Yeah, just as a subcommittee member, I just might also, I mean, Commissioner Ho, I think you did not miss something. I don't think we had, I think that that is our main, our subcommittee's main ask or one of the main asks is that we get clarity. We were shown, first of all, a schedule around the sessions. Um, it was put on the screen, but we don't have that. We don't have a detailed plan of um exactly how they're going to go about this and the questions that will be asked and the staff that will be present. And that's really what um we would like a lot of clarity on before we can make any further recommendations. Um, like Hector said, like to not reinvent the wheel, we just need to know what's happening. And so. That's the big idea.
Yeah, and there was the time constraint too concerned us because they had one listening session planned for May 25th. And so between now and our next meeting, that's a consideration. It's like, I think, two weeks or more.
Yeah, I, uh, sorry, Chair, do you mind if I just respond? So kind of to be clear. Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, so uh, you know, even in an intimate group, I think it could be problematic if we really want to. Hone in on domestic violence to um to create that safe space. If if I think victim survivors are in a space with other victim survivors, that's very different. Than if it's three or four people that could be talking about a range of things, right? So um, I think it goes back to what Commissioner Malvito said, which is what is the goal of the listening session? And perhaps you have listening sessions with different goals where you're really trying to hone in on. A specific fit population that might have specific needs, you know, if we're looking at youth or the LGBTQ community. Um, and obviously there's going to be overlap. We all don't just identify in one small box. Um, but there are going to be specific areas, I think, like domestic violence, where they just need a safe space just to talk about that. Thanks so much.
All right, any other discussion at this time? And you know, what I can say, you know, first, thank you for the report. Um, certainly, we we need to have the schedule in hand and y'all need to have the schedule in hand. Um, and and the basic information about their their thinking. Um, so that that will be an immediate priority that we did that. Yeah, thank you for the presentation of tonight. And now if we can go to. Our next subcommittee, Policing Budgets and Alternatives to Policing.
Chair Matel, if I can interrupt just for one second?
Yes.
I just want to make sure the task force is aware. We did just send out the link. We posted the information. Um, that David Mohammed presented at the last meeting on the Task Force website. Um, and I did just re- resend out that link to everyone. So you have that handy for your future conversations. Thank you for your indulgence, Chair.
Thank you.
So we met last night and we didn't decide who would make a report. Um. So I, it's a short report. Um, what we're trying to do is prepare for the meeting coming up and the agenda items. That are on today's meeting. So we met with a person from the community. Um, and talked about fair and impartial working work groups, recommendations. And got deeper knowledge of what's going to be presented today so we could have our questions. Um, sort of ready to go. But a couple of things, you know, we also have. Um, had asked to, last week, we had asked to. To see if we could streamline this process a little bit because we got these two pages of schedule. Um, starting with the meeting on April the 8th and the last meeting, probably one more is August the 12th. And I, I'm requesting that everyone read these. Um, because nowhere does it say where the listening sessions fit in. Um, it does say when we will get the community survey results, which is June the 10th. So I think if we could have a similar list as to when a listening session is going to happen. Because I know there is one coming up for the Downtown Working Association. And there was a meeting before the listening session to sort of set the parameters of the listening session, which will be in the beginning of June. So hopefully that that will happen with each of the clusters that are going to do the listening sessions. So as soon as we can get those, and my other question is, can we as task force members attend? Um, any of these listening sessions? David, do you know the answer to that?
I I do not have an answer. I would defer um to David Mohammed. I know. Uh, he's got a meeting set up with uh Task Force Member Fine and Letsker, and I think a few others on Friday. So I think they could tackle some of those topics then.
Okay, thank you. That was our report. Anybody else who had anything?
I just wanted to um underscore what Buna said because I think people who belong to these communities like Hector or Buna or myself or whatever. That it's important that they have deep connection and support in getting people there and. Hopefully helping to um allow people to feel safe in sharing their experiences.
Okay, well, thank you, uh, Buna. Thank you. Um, you can go ahead and move on to the presentation on Fair and Impartial Policing, uh, recommendations. Um, I believe you will be receiving presentations from the Chair of uh the Working Group and the current Chair of the PRC, Mr. Ramsey. Are you with us today?
I am. Thank you, Commissioner Mizell. Appreciate it, Mr. Chair. And um, so uh, thank you for having us. Um, as Commissioner Mizell said, um, I am the Chair of the Mayor's Working Group on uh Fair and Impartial Policing. And I just also happen to be chairperson of the um. Of the Police, Berkeley's Police Review Commission. So I am here today with Commissioner Cala- Calavita. Who also is a um, a member of the Fair and Impartial Working Group and also is a uh commissioner. On the Police Review Commissioner and was actually our former Chair. Um, and Tano Trachtenberg, the mayor's um legislative aide is also assisting us on this and is going to be helping share screen and show some documents. But we uh wanted to give you a presentation to give you background and context. Context for what the uh Working Group did over the last uh year and a half essentially and some of the recommendations that we. Um, made to the council uh and that the council ultimately adopted. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the composition. Um, the process that we had for the working group and sort of what our timeline was leading into the actual recommendations that were. Um, approved by council and Commissioner Calavita is going to um take over from there and uh briefly. Review uh some of the specific recommendations. So just as a background, and if I can get next slide. Uh, wanted to let you know sort of the context that led to the formation of the fair and, um, excuse me, to the Fair and Impartial Working Group. Uh, and sort of what, you know, what we were tasked with doing. So really it dates back to 2014. Um, and this is when uh the council unanimously voted to approve a policy prohibiting racial racial profiling. And issued a policy before and attempted to implement that. Um, over time, the next couple of years, there were uh some indication that there were disparities in use of force and and stops based on race. Um, some things through Community Public Records Act. Um, and uh, the city, as a result of that contracted with the Center on Police Equity that then did a study. And a draft report came out, which showed that there were some disparities based on race. I'm giving you the very high level um background, but I I think that's best. We don't take up too much time. Um, there were then a series of referrals that were sent to the city manager's office to talk about developing an action plan. Um, to address some of these racial disparities. Time went by and the council was not satisfied with the speed with which. Um, there were responses occurring. And um, ultimately, there was a response to a c- collection of referrals that the council has made, had made from the BPD. And the Public Safety Committee from the council decided that they wanted to convene a task force, recommended that the. Mayor convene a task force to address some of these issues. So we are the task force that came out of that. And if you see in 2020. Uh, the mayor's mayor's Fair and Impartial Working Group meets 15 times to listen to experts, community development and develop recommendations. So we were actually formed in December of 2019, just a few months before COVID started. Uh, to give you a sense of the background of who the mayor placed on the working group, in addition to. Uh, the participation of the police department itself. So we had at the time. Uh, Chief Greenwood, Captain Rolary, uh, and various command staff who were involved. And then we also had two. Uh, data specialist essentially, Officer Matt Yee, who had a background in statistics and Arlo Monberg, who was an intern from the Goldman School of Public Policy. Who offered some some uh data analysis and statistics support. And then there were members from the Police Review Commission. Uh, myself, uh, Commissioner Calavita and your chair who were involved. We also had various community members, so. Uh, ACLU chapter was represented, the NAACP chapter was represented, and of course, your Commissioner Malvito. Of of uh Latinus Unitis was also involved. We also had a civil rights attorney. Uh, Berkeley Community Safety Coalition, and you can see then we also had representatives of students, Commissioner Mizell. Uh, was dual-headed in that in that way. And then we had an academic expert who also is a grad student at at Cal who did tremendous work on this, uh, perfecto oxlum. So that was the background. We came to it with a wide variety of community support, civic civic involvement. And uh actually support from the police department. So we had a five-phase process. We developed a work plan and objectives essentially that was based on referrals that the uh council had sent before that they wanted. Um, to get a what they felt as a substantive response to. And based on those referrals, we developed a working plan. And we broke things into phases where first we would do a quanti- quantitative analysis of data we had on stops and disparities. And then we'd hope to move to a qualitative analysis to get community involvement and to hear more anecdotal. Um, information about their, about the community's interaction with the police. I would just point out that unfortunately, phase three got stymied a little bit by COVID because all of a sudden we weren't able to meet in person. Because that happened, obviously, in March, right when we were getting underway after George Floyd murder. We uh sort of started back up immediately, uh, and the qualitative analysis at that point um was not as feasible. And we moved quickly so that we could actually uh do the work of formulating um uh recommendations. We got input from various experts throughout the nation. Uh, Dr. Frank, these are some examples. Dr. Frank Baumgartner is an expert. Uh, from uh the University of North Carolina. Then we had an Oakland Police Department captain talking about some of those things, Stockton PD. And then some other community members. So out of that, we drafted a series of recommendations. Uh, and the recommendations were really developed um sort of in its earliest stage by a subcommittee of working group members. But then discussed by the full uh, the full working group. And the only recommendations that we um made to the council. Uh, as a group were those that we could have consensus on. So there was not a for a a a boat on these. But if we could establish that there was a group-wide consensus for these recommendations, those were the ones that we forwarded on to council. And footnoted other ones where there was no consensus on. So based on that, we fi- finalized. Uh, uh, that was how we finalized the process, forwarded that on to the council, presented to them, and council approved. Um, these recommendations with some small, some some minor tweaks, but I will pass it on to Commissioner Calavita to talk you through. Um, some of the recommendations.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so to put our proposals in context, here's a look at racial disparities in BPD stops and searches. This is for 2015 to 2018. You may have seen these data already. This first slide shows that in Berkeley for those years, black drivers were about eight times more likely to be stopped than white drivers. And the ratio for Latinx drivers was about four to one. Next slide. This slide shows even more graphically the disparity between black drivers and white drivers. Next. Here we see the disparity in search rates with black drivers who are stopped being searched relative to whites at a rate of almost four to one. So this is among people who are stopped, the search. Uh, the searches is is about four to one uh black drivers to white drivers. And for Latinx drivers, uh, they're searched more than twice as often. Next. I'm sorry, back. So what we see in this slide is that although African-American drivers are far more likely to be stopped. Uh, and searched than white drivers, the yield rate in the form of citations or arrests. Is higher for white drivers who are stopped. And this particular uh statistic. Uh, seemed to us really important to suggest uh some level of. Um, well, that the threshold for suspicion was uh lower for uh black drivers as opposed to white drivers. Um. Next slide. So now I'll speak very uh briefly to some of our recommendations. Um, that were designed to um eliminate these racial disparities that so erode trust and therefore public safety. And on this slide, I'm sorry, the writing is a little small. I'm just going to speak to the ones that are bold. We recommended all 15 of these uh changes. Uh, but in this slide, um, vehicle stops make up the vast majority of stops by the police department. And recommendations number one and four on this slide. Address vehicle stops and go together like two sides of the same coin. They call for eliminating stops for low-level offenses that don't directly impact safety. These low-level offenses include such things as a missing taillight or expired registration tags. Things that are sometimes referred to as poverty offenses for obvious reasons. And research across the country shows that these discretionary stops for low-level offenses disproportionately affect people of color. And they're sometimes used as a pretext to search a person or vehicle based on vague hunches. Driven in part by implicit bias. The effect of these low-level pretextual or so-called investigatory stops, in other words, people are stopped in order that an investigation might be. Carried out based on a hunch. The 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 effect on trust and community relations is detailed in a book. Uh, called Suspect Citizens by Dr. Baumgartner, who spoke to our working group. And the research underlying that book reveals that not only are racial disparities reduced, but public safety is actually increased. By limiting so-called investigatory stops based on little more than a hunch. And numbers two and three on this slide. Stipulate instead that stops of criminal suspects must be based on specific evidence-based criteria. And that race may only play a role if it is paired with clear and specific evidence-based descriptions. That's what we mean by evidence-based, that there be specific criteria. Uh, including criteria like age, gender, height, model of car, et cetera. The implementation of what's called an early intervention system or EIS, sometimes called a risk management system. Is number five on this list. Is number five on this list, and it's a key ingredient of change. The EIS is meant to ensure accountability of individual officers and build trust. Software programs can help identify individual officers who are outliers. In the department in stops, searches and use of force against people of color. And if such outliers are. Are found, then the next step in the EIS is to figure out the reasons for any disparities. In their record. And then if appropriate, place any outliers on supervisory monitoring, monitoring and mentoring. With discipline being only a last resort. And and it bears. Noting that this is not meant to be a disciplinary system, but a way to enhance public and officer safety. As well as trust. And it's really a mentoring and monitoring system more than anything. So. Our proposals also include a requirement that before an officer does a consent search, and that's number eight on this list. The subject must sign a written, must be provided with a written written consent form and sign it if they agree to it. That specify their rights to deny consent. And Professor Baumgartner did. An analysis of such consent forms and his team found that the cities that require such written consent. In those cities, searches declined by 75% with a significant proportion being among people of color. So we thought that that was really an important thing to require. So these are just. Some of our key proposals. And next slide, please. We're pleased that the council has passed the package unanimously, if my memory is correct. And the next step is to ensure that these changes are implemented. And to that end, the working group did include implementation measures with the working group and the Police Review Commission. And the incoming Police Accountability Board playing key roles. So I'll stop there and I'm not sure if people want to ask questions now. We could, we could answer questions if you have any.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Calavita, Commissioner Ramsey. I'll ask commissioners. You know, I think, yeah, we make a few initial questions now that we will have the response of the implementation by the department to ask. More questions. So Commissioner Lindheim.
Well, I was just going to ask about implementation from the point of view of the. Commissioner or the committee. As to whether they're satisfied with the progress. Of moving forward on these recommendations or not yet.
I'll jump in there. I mean, that's a good question. I mean, this was passed by the council on February 24th. And we know we're starting the process of getting some feedback, both the council ourselves and the PRC from from the city manager and the. And the police chief about the progress of these, but I would say it's still early, but people are very interested in monitoring to make sure that that's happening. You know, as quickly as possible. But I'd say the jury is still out on that.
One, if I could just add one thing, I do think it's important that the oversight body, whether it be the PRC or the incoming PAB. As well as the working group, the working group can continue to provide some, let's say, oversight. Just to make sure that, you know, the practice on the ground coincides with what these policies are. And. So we'll be, we'll be looking as we move forward.
Commissioner. Hi. I guess first I just want to thank you all for doing this work. It looks. Amazing and detailed and thoughtful and nuanced. And I'm just so grateful. To have this document to build on, especially with Burke dot, I think. Just recommendations one and four are so relevant. I've already been sharing it as a sign of like progress for where our city is going. Obviously, with all of the implementation challenges that we face. So so thank you very much for that. I think on the issues that I don't know much about, I had a sort of a gut reaction to the. Written consent piece of it. And I was wondering if you could explain that. I mean. My gut reaction is that sounds terrible. You know, like if somebody with a gun asks you for to sign something, would you just do it? So if you could explain the nuance of that, I think for the benefit of other folks who might have the same question. That would be helpful. And my last question was, did the did BPD participate in any of these meetings?
So I'll answer the last question first, and then I'll hand it over to Commissioner Calavita to talk about the consent form. BPD fully participated in the meetings from start to finish. The chief, Chief Greenwood was involved. And then at the very end. I believe Chief Lewis as well, but but we also had full participation and support from. Captain Rowley, Jen Tate, I mean, a whole variety of of command staff. I would say we probably had. You know, at least five or six officers participating in each public meeting, and we had 15 public meetings. Commissioner Calavita, you want to talk about the consent?
So on the consent form, you you raise a good question. First of all, we don't anticipate that the. Subject who's being asked to sign a consent form will have a gun pointed at them because that yes, you're right. And what Professor Baumgartner found was that. The effectiveness of this in terms of. It being a meaningful change depended a lot on the support of the chief. That in some cases. The requirement to sign a consent form meant. That some officers in 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 areas where the chief, in jurisdictions where the chief was not in support of this. They just shifted the type of search to a. Search based on suspicion or something else. All right. So it really does require the full support of the department and the chief in particular. But what Baumgartner and his team found was that indeed. In areas where the chief supported this. And abided by it in a meaningful way. Consent searches were reduced by 75%, meaning that people who read the form, read that they had rights to deny it and so forth. Searches were significantly reduced. With a meaningful number of that reduction being people of color.
I would also just note in terms of police participation and consensus. That again, all of the recommendations that we made to the city council, we ultimately had consensus by the entire working group. Including the police department. That's how we came out of that. There were certain. Recommendations that individual working group members made that did not achieve consensus. And I think those are part of an appendix or exhibit to. To the final report. Yeah, and we hope to see that continued support, obviously, moving forward in the implementation. That's essential for some of these things. But these were all recommendations that were consensus.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll briefly add to that point, Chris, there goes, you know, what can this be really is that. The metric about folks, you know, now not learning about these rights that they had the whole time, but in practice. Were more or less denied because they didn't know about them. And you know, if a police officer who has a weapon on them. Who is often intimidating figures to many community, they say, oh, can I search this? You may not know that you can say no. So I think the form becomes critical in those situations. Commissioner.
I was just gonna say, and also depending on how questions about, you know, achieving consent are phrased. I mean, you can ask someone, you can, someone can be told. That they have the right to deny it, or someone can be told, well, if you didn't do anything, you don't mind if I take a look in your trunk, do you? I mean, there are different ways that can be phrased. So this adds some uniformity to that.
And that and and that really is. You know, it needs to be a written consent form with a specification of a person's rights in. Very straightforward language, but you're right, Chair Ramsey, that just saying, oh, you have a right not to. Doesn't, doesn't work.
Commissioner Austin.
Is is very, very interesting and discouraging to compare what we've just heard about. This report from from Mr. Ramsey. With a document that we received this afternoon, or at least I received it this afternoon. And I'm assuming that the the rest of the commissioners probably did too. The one we just received is called Implementation of Fair and Impartial Policing Recommendations. When you compare what we've just heard. With this new report from the police department. It appears to, at least to me, that the police department is telling us to get lost. It is apparently a deliberate slap in the face to us and saying, we, the police department, are not going to cooperate in this effort. It is an insult to the city council, which requested that all this be done, and it's an insult to us. And it is. It's a bad thing for the people of our city. Right now isn't the time to give you a detailed analysis of it, especially since I only received it a few minutes before this meeting started. But we should get back to this and and look at what the. Leadership of our current police department has said. On this subject. Then on the point that we were just talking about before it was my turn to speak. The the written consent. Idea. I think there's much more to be said about that. And more to be said than we can say tonight. So I hope that we will bring that back onto our agenda at a future meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, we can definitely discuss more, but I would point out that that issue. Is the item has already been passed by city council. And, you know, we. You know, I can say as a member on it, we're really right at that point where we're trying to see, you know, implementation being done. And see, you know, what will the practical effects of these things be if they're being done the right way. Happy to discuss more, but I don't think it is something we can affect directly. Commissioner Fine.
You know, I'm looking at all of these recommendations to be implemented and that. The hope that through them and the consent form that there will be behavior changes by policemen in the department. But one thing that occurs to me is what the culture is in the police department right now. And I'm like. My concern is, are we dealing with like a warrior mentality? I was very. Surprised to learn last week, there's only 14 to 16% women in the department. And I think the collection of demographic. Statistics and the way that they're collected can also reflect a mentality. And they were pretty rigid statistics only based on race, ethnicity. And sex, male, female. So. How do you take what the fair and impartial policing is supposed to implement? And I think by doing it repeatedly and getting the practice of it, that that will modify. Behavior, but are we also dealing with the larger culture in the police department that needs to be addressed as well?
So I think. I think you're absolutely right. Some of these reforms. Are addressed to. Behavior change. And in some ways, behavior is easier to change than attitudes or culture, right? So certain of these are behavior changes, like the consent form and like. The reduction in folk in in traffic stops based on minor offenses. And another one, which I didn't discuss, which is. The limitation on doing searches just because somebody is on probation or parole, which is also critical. These are directed at limiting. Officers' behavior, whatever their biases may be. Or not. You know, these things put. Boundaries around behavior. And that's in some ways easier to do, although we have to watch and see how it's put into practice. There are also some that are directed at cultural change. For example, there's a lot of emphasis here on implicit bias training. And I think even the EIS system, even though it is. Ostensibly directed at individual officers and outliers. If something like that is implemented in a meaningful way. It can also have an indirect effect on culture, because once you single out individuals. For their outlying status and and monitor them and mentor them. It makes it clear that this is no longer, or I shouldn't say no longer, but it makes it clear that this is not the norm. You know, this is not the way we do things. And so over time, one would hope that that EIS system would produce some cultural change. And I should also say, I think the leadership. Of the department is critical. Like Professor Baumgartner's research showed. On the consent form and on other aspects that I didn't talk about. That the leadership is critical. But you but you're right, there's behavioral, there's ways in which we can limit behavior. Even before we change attitudes, because attitudes and culture are harder to do. But in the process of doing that, like through the EIS, over time. That can signal, look, this isn't the way we do it.
Chairman Mizell, I'm not sure how many questions you want us to ask before the police department presentation, but.
We have two hands up.
Two more. Vice Chair, do you have something?
Yeah, I was going to ask if the consultant piece has moved forward. At all. And if not, how long before you think a consultant might be hired to start the plan? The plan to implement the recommendations.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm going to call on Mr. Trachtenberger, the mayor's assistant. To probably address where we we are in that.
Okay, so I have a second question. In the earlier versions. There there were recommendations around accountability. But now it seems like that piece is either hidden or not there. So. Let's say a scenario is that the police chief says, I can only get this done. I can't, I can't deal with the rest. So who do we, the citizens, go to to say, hey, implementation is not being done. The way that we expected these recommendations to be implemented. So where where does that accountability piece sit?
I think right now, since the council has made clear that they are going to be monitoring this and that there's a key role. By the PRC and the incoming PAB, as well as the Fair and Impartial Working Group. But I think ultimately that monitoring, you know, that buck stops with the council, and they've indicated that they. Plan to to keep a close eye and address this as time goes on.
Thank you.
Yes, and to your point, Vice Chair, that section you're thinking of. You know, was was part of. You know, recommendations that we did not get consensus on. And there was. I and others on the on the working group wrote a letter. In regards to our concerns for accountability. And that's in the original packet. I'm not sure if it's in our packet tonight. Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you very much to the working group. This clearly took a ton of effort. I'd like to ask about data and I'll see if I can make this as quick as possible. How is the working group feeling about the data capture? That that gave us the basis for a lot of all of the recommendations here. Do we do we feel like the data capture is set up to be consistent? And there's some rigor, because there's lots of different parties inputting data. And so that we will be able to follow the trends that that you guys have very effectively pointed out. And does does the shift to RIPA? At least allow for consistency in watching these certain trends and perhaps even improve the situation? What is the working group's opinion? On the on the shift to RIPA? Might we have? New trends that we could then watch even more closely? Thank you.
Yeah, I think you've hit on a key issue. Coming into this, you know, we wanted to respond to the referrals. Based on the current data we have. I do think the experts.
I do think the experts, both from the Goldman School of Public Policy and even within the police department, you know, acknowledged that the data that we had was based on census tract data, which might not be perfect, but essentially that was the best data that we had, and there were times at which the reasons for stops, whether it be consent, I mean, stops and searches, so whether it be probation search or consent search, I mean, any variety of reasons why someone maybe stopped or searched, wasn't broken down in the way that we would have liked ideally, but we didn't feel like we could wait for more detailed information. And I think as a group, we were satisfied to move forward based on the census tract data, understanding that RIPA was coming into place, that the city of Berkeley has now implemented those requirements more quickly than they had to based on the size of the department. And we think that information will be, you know, vital and better suited for monitoring trends and think we'll be able to do that going forward. So I think you hit all the high points there. Commissioner Calavita, any additional comments?
Absolutely. The RIPA data will be more detailed, and among other things, it will show the residency of the people being stopped and searched, and it will, oh, there was one other thing that I thought was important about.
The reasons for a search?
The reason for a search, yeah, the reason for a search, and also the contraband yield rate, because the old data that we have on yield rates, which shows that whites have higher yield rates, which seems to be a real, I mean, across the country, people consider that this to be a critical factor in understanding discrimination, whether discrimination exists or racial profiling. And we have not, before RIPA, had data on anything except arrests and citations. We haven't had data on whether contraband was found, and so we'll be able to see that as well. And so there's just a whole host of things that the RIPA will give us that we haven't had, that we didn't have previously. Given the statistics that we have had and all the various entities, the Center for Policing Equity Report that was issued, I think in 2018 now, a while back, they all show these disparities. I don't expect the RIPA data to show anything dramatically different, but it will just allow us to have more detailed understanding of what's going on.
Great, thank you so much to the whole team.
Commissioner Austin, and that task force, if we can move to the department's presentation, or we'll have more time for questions as well. Are your music, Commissioner?
So I didn't quite hear what you said, Commissioner Mizell, were you saying it's my turn to speak?
Yes.
Okay. One further comment on the implementation of fair and impartial hearing, implementation of fair and impartial policing recommendation material that was sent to us, or at least to me today. This document has a problem that has been printed on white paper with blue splotches covering large parts of it. I'm showing it to you on the screen that normally has my face on it, so you can see that blue. That makes it extremely difficult to read, and so in order for us to analyze it, we would have to write out in handwriting what we can see through that blue. We can't just print it out. I tried printing it out, and it's basically unreadable. So fortunately, we have the interim chief with us tonight, and so I'd like to ask her if she will direct that we be provided with a plain black and white copy of this report so that we can give it the attention that it deserves, and that way we will not have to go through the formality of the Public Records Act request.
Certainly, we can have that addressed, Commissioner, in our next section here, where we get the presentation from the department, and the chief should be there and can answer your question. So if there are no further questions for the members of the working group, I'm thanking both Commissioner Ramsey, Mr. Calavita. Obviously, you know, I appreciate both of y'all's work, and I know how long, you know, how much work this process was, so thank you for being here.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Commissioner, and you too.
And I do always want to thank Tana Trachtenberg, who really has been the driving force behind all of this. Thanks.
So I'll sign off now.
Okay, I can hear everyone now. Sorry, I missed the past 20 seconds, but thank you again to the task force members, sorry, the working group members, and yes, the department is ready to present on the implementation of the fair and impartial policing recommendations so far, and be happy to move to that.
Thank you, good evening. First and foremost, I really want to apologize if there were any issues with the document that you were sent today, and I can assure you that that was not the intent, and I'd be happy to provide a clean PDF copy that doesn't have any background. I apologize, that's just a manner of changing the PowerPoint to a PDF, and I apologize for that. Again, I also want to acknowledge and very much thank the Fair and Impartial Policing Task Force, not only for the incredible amount of work that went into these recommendations, but for the presentation tonight. And I really do want to share that we are very forward focused, I'm very forward focused and committed to engaging in this process and working through the recommendations. And I know there were questions about accountability and ensuring the items get accomplished, but very much the intent is to be in collaboration with the Fair and Impartial Policing Task Force to ensure that we are understanding and hitting the mark as we move towards implementation. And hopefully, as we work through the steps that we've accomplished to date, you'll see some meaningful progress. And it's very early in the process, you know, we're less than three months since council recommended unanimously approve these, but in order to be really organized on that, I wanted to share the presentation that shows really where we are in this process. So for us, it was really important, or I know for me it was really important, that we had a coordinated approach as we completed this work. There's a lot of really important recommendations, and we knew that some could be accomplished in a short time and some would be longer, just based on the amount of work that needed to be done and the thoughtfulness that needed to be applied as changes were implemented. But in order to make sure we were tracking, that we were hitting our timelines, that we were clearly progressing, I have assigned an internal team to coordinate and track progress. They'll bring internal stakeholders in, they report back to me on where we are progress items, and really make sure that we're moving forward. I also will quarterly be providing progress updates to city council. That's done in conjunction or in collaboration with the Fair and Impartial Policing Task Force. For example, I just submitted an item to go to council in June and met with the task force last week to ensure that they were aware, not only the items that I'm presenting today, but the items that I'll be discussing with council. That collaboration will continue, we've committed to that, and that is my intent, that we continue to hear from the task force about what their intention and thoughts were behind these recommendations. Finally, a lot of the, some of the items from the task force were referred to work as part of this task force, and Lieutenant McGee, who has been with you since the start of these meetings, is engaged in supporting our internal efforts in that process. So joining me tonight is one of the individuals who has been assigned to track this progress internally, it's Sergeant Peter Lee, and he's gonna help present some of these slides with me.
Good evening, Sergeant Lee. So this recommendation here addresses the basis for police stops. For this recommendation, a working group was formed, does comprise of employees from every division of the police department. The task this working group has, there's two tasks. One is to identify what low-level offenses are applicable while balancing traffic safety and Berkeley's Vision Zero initiative, and two, to identify other factors like grant eligibility or conflict with MLUs because of changes in working positions. This working group meets bi-weekly, or at a minimum bi-weekly, and we anticipate completion of this to be sometime in the fall. So precision-based policing, the police department is developing a precision-based police model that aims to reduce the numbers of stop that studies have shown have minimal impact on public safety. This model focuses officers' discretionary time in traffic safety and investigative or intelligence-based stops, to really focus our time on public safety. Data-driven tools have been developed and provided to our community service bureau, as well as the patrol watch commanders. These tools provide information to help area coordinators and commanders strategize their deployment practices. The ultimate goal is to provide officers with these same tools so they can use it daily, and also to train them to collect more data, because better data means better tools, and better tools means better strategies. The work on this task is ongoing, so it's in progress.
I did want to share with this particular item, as we're starting to develop our implementation plan, we see this as one of the areas where that consultant work will be most useful to us. We do have Officer Matt Yee, who is, does have a background in some of this at work, but certainly connections that we've had with the Goldman School and working with that is something that we want to pursue as some of this begins to move in areas outside of our expertise. Okay, so the next item had to do with racial profiling, and it was very clear that the purpose of this was really that there was a desire and commitment that needed to come from the Berkeley Police Department, that race and ethnicity would not be a reason alone to make a stop. We identified that both the BPD policy and the penal code are very clear on this, and I included that language here, because I think it's very pertinent to this conversation, what officers are specifically prohibited from doing. So what we did was look at both the penal code and the policy in light of the recommendation, and we found that those policies were very clear, and the law is very clear that prohibits racial profiling. Oh, sorry about that.
So this, this recommendation involves an implementation of our early intervention system, EIS. E13 is Berkeley Police Department's early warning system policy. This policy provides that employees' behavior and/or performance, complaints, use of force, even legal collisions, these are all subject to review. This policy is being amended to add new language to address this recommendation, and the new language is being crafted by another working group that does comprise of several employees. Working this is in progress and is anticipated to be completed by August. So Policy 311 is a department search and seizure policy. This policy is in a process of being amended to create a section requiring written consent for searches. A written consent form already exists, but is being revised. A draft is already done and is pending for the review. We anticipate the completion date for this to be sometime in August. As far as limiting warrantless searches, the search and seizure policy has already been amended to reflect these limitations and are aligned with the recommendation. Specifically, Section 311.5 and 0.6 were modified to reflect these limitations to warrantless searches. Status for that recommendation is complete.
And then the next recommendation had to do with addressing profiling by proxy. Some people refer to that as the Karen Law, and what's been done in that area related specifically to the department is that our communications center has a manual, a training manual, that sets their policies and procedures, and that has been updated to include a section on profiling by proxy. It creates a system where we do capture that that incident was called in. Dispatchers are trained to ensure that any report of an incident is not based merely on someone's protected status, on race, or them being, in and of itself, they just think they're suspicious doing some activity, that they actually ask questions to determine whether a crime has occurred, and do not dispatch an officer if they believe that this situation is occurring, or it's profiling by proxy. We understand this is an issue that has been emerging, and it's something that we'll continue to train not only our dispatchers, but our officers on how to identify and address these biases that are, that come in when they're completed, when they're reported.
Fire racist police officers, Policy 1029, and police regulations 232, 235, 23, and 250, these are all policies that provide accountability for racist behaviors, and this includes anything social media related. So all these policies were reviewed because of the task force recommendations, and they were found to provide necessary authority to investigate allegations of racism. Department policies clearly identify racial discrimination as misconduct and require reporting and a prompt investigation of any allegation of it. Also, any employee who becomes aware or observes any discrimination on the basis of a protected class is required to notify a supervisor by the end of their shift or they're off, they have to notify a supervisor within comfort hours. The policies, all the policies that I just listed, provide authority to investigate and pose discipline up to and including termination. Any allegation would be thoroughly investigated, and employees will be held accountable.
You see that there's some information in there at the bottom about exploring additional methods in addressing behaviors. That's really, that line really stemmed from a conversation as we provided the first round of collaboration with the Fair and Impartial Policing Task Force around our implementation, and there was a discussion or question around what some other agencies are looking at in regards to deep scans, that's been in the media a little bit. And while we aren't, we know that there are some legal issues around First Amendment rights and things like that, within that, it's not something that we are opposed to exploring and seeing if it's viable, both from a cost and a legal standpoint. So this next item had to do with data. I know there was a question about data, about what kind of data we're gonna have in the future, and how that data can be used and kind of benefit this whole process. I will share that as part of the city auditor's office review of our recent data, that they made a recommendation that we expand our open data portal information with police data. We have already engaged in the process of determining if our current vendor can accommodate the changes in data that we want to publish. Our, the dataset that we were prior, are publishing now has been that way for several years, and it's limited in that it didn't include things that were not listed as crimes. So when that dataset was first created, our understanding was that it was created so that if you wanted to know about actual crimes that occurred, that you could get that information. What we found was that there's a lot of calls for service that come in that may not originally come in as a crime, but after the officers arrive on scene and do an investigation, they determine a crime did exist. So that dataset wasn't a complete dataset. Expanding the open data portal, including more data, will not only expand the length of time that data stays on the website, and will update it more often, and will include additional information about calls for service, arrests, and booking. I know there were also questions about what additional information we'll get from RIPA, the implementation by the police department. The implementation by the Police Department of that ahead of schedule has allowed us to begin data collection and get a lot more detail on stops. Some of those things were mentioned. I did also want to share that we'll be able to determine, get information, such as the, not only the residency of the person stopped, but the reason, initial reason for the stop, the reason for the search, some information about what was discovered on the stop. And we just think that the more information we have, the better decisions we can have about looking forward and policies and whether the implementation of these efforts has been effective. And then there's also going to be some amendments within the early warning that addressed this recommendation well as far as reviewing data. So while some work is in progress in this, we're still only calling this partially completed as we realize there's a lot more work to be done here. So this next item had to do with increasing access for individuals that we deal with for information on how to get to make a complaint, either through our internal affairs or for the Police Review Commission's soon-to-be Police Accountability Board. So this recommendation had two pieces of it. One is to make resources on police civilian encounters more publicly available. And the second piece was that when officers detain someone in the field, that they would provide them on the back of their business card with information on how to get a comment, how to make a commendation for service they appreciated or a complaint if they had some issue or concern about the service that they got. I will share that we have already launched into the field stickers that are on the back of all the existing business cards that we have. That sticker contains contact information for Internal Affairs and the Police Review Commission, and also a QR code that takes them to a landing page on our website that will, that has information about these processes, provides more information. And we see that as a place to add information about police civilian encounters, as well as how to get a further assistance. Moving forward, all new cards will have this information printed on them. But we felt that directing people to a website with even more information and more resources was going to be very helpful. Again, I was very happy with the suggestion that we got in the meeting I had with the Fair and Impartial Policing Task Force. They made some suggestions around making the website very accessible, multiple languages and such, and that's something that we definitely heard and want to take into account as we launch this website.
I'll put on the earphones.
So, you know, as I started with, and I think it's really critical to this, is that we are very committed to implementation. It is early in the process. We do believe, I do believe that we've made some measurable steps towards implementation of these recommendations. Our goal is to, is to continue to work with the Fair and Impartial Policing Task Force to ensure that, as I said earlier, that we're hitting the mark. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Your commissioners have some questions. Commissioner Lindheim.
Chief, I'm just curious what your understanding is. You made it very clear that the law prohibits discrimination or bias. You made it very clear that OPD policy, I'm sorry, BPD policy prohibits bias, yet there's massive disparity in the stop data. What are your explanations of why the data looks the way it is? Assuming that it's illegal to have bias and the data certainly looks like there's bias in action, how do you explain that?
I think that you have raised what is a national question, is why there are biases in our criminal justice system, why there are biases in stop data, why there are biases in people who call the police and report crimes on certain individuals. You have raised a very critical question, and that is why we are forward-focused. You know, my commitment is to reducing disparity in the ways that we can. That's why we rely heavily on Task Force recommendations. Why I'm relying heavily on this group's recommendations as we seek ways to, as a community and as a police department, understand the impact of our actions, the ways we can understand the methods that we use, the things that we employ, the tools and data that we assess in our work and move forward with that. That's part of this process. Our, you know, our stated responsibility is to protect and serve our community and to do that treating people with equity and respect and reducing disparate treatment. And our policy allows us to investigate when we learn that someone is engaged in behavior that is outside of that. The state law prohibits that, which gives us authority and power to do something about it if an employee is engaged in that. What you, what you're calling light to is the, how are we going to work through this together and collaborate and make meaningful change?
Well, let me not let you off the hook quite so easily. I had Chief Meehan in my class when the first stop data came out, and the stop data looked very identical to what it looks like currently. And my students asked him, so what's up with that? And he basically had no explanation other than to say, must be implicit bias. Next year, I had Chief Greenwood in class, asked the same question. No real answer, saying, well, must be implicit bias. How is BPD going to get beyond just sort of this maybe true comment, but it's not a very helpful comment for addressing the issue?
I think, as I said, you know, that's the question. That's the question for all of us. That's the work that is in front of us. If there was an easy answer, I think we would have implemented something already. But drawing light on, having an understanding of, having good data, being willing to listen and make meaningful change, that's the place I know to start. You know, I don't have an easy answer for your question. I don't know that it must be one thing or another. I think there's a lot of different factors that play into data. There's, you know, we don't always have all the information that we need, but we have to be open to exploring what the data can tell us and making meaningful change.
Let me just follow up quickly, just one last piece of this. So are you, I know in Oakland, when we had this data that, let's just say, was similar, although there are different explanations, you know, we then discussed data with the officers. We discussed it at lineup, we discussed it in the command staff meetings, and people came up with what they thought were at least new approaches. Are you discussing this with your patrol officers and with your command staff to figure out why the data looks the way it does?
We are actively discussing all of this work that's in front of us, about looking with a new lens on the work that we do, hearing what the community is sharing with us, looking at their recommendations and the things that are being, you know, the ways we're being challenged to consider and do our work differently. That is a regular conversation in the office daily.
Okay.
Commissioner Hager.
Thank you. Dan did, Commissioner Lindheim did just ask my primary question. I do want to circle back to this idea of implicit bias that BPD has kind of been saying like, oh, it's implicit bias, maybe it's implicit bias. I would just like to add to the idea of implicit bias for maybe a layperson who's watching. Implicit bias is when you have racism inside of you, and you may not explicitly state that you are racist, but your actions are racist. So that's what implicit bias is. So the answer to the question does then boil down to racism. I just think it's good to get it in clear terms when we're talking about police and racial disparities. It's because of racism. My question, though, is you said you are working to minimize or de-emphasize low-level stops, and I'd like to know how officers are being told to decide when they should act on low-level stops and the policies around that. Why minimize and de-emphasize and why not just eliminate?
Those are really good questions. I can share that I am actively working on a draft communication with the department that will serve as sort of a foundation until the working group that's working on the recommendation sort of establishes what those low-level offenses are. I will share there's quite a bit of challenge in that, and the challenge exists in us trying to overlay the Vision Zero initiatives with, with the work that we're doing. So, for example, it depends on who you ask. Someone may tell you that they see wearing a seatbelt as a low-level offense. One school of thought is that's a low-level offense because who does it hurt? The driver's driving without a seatbelt. They may be in a rush, whatever it is. The very other side of that argument is we are looking very seriously at the extreme accidents that occur, those that take life, those that cause serious injuries, those collisions, I'm sorry. And we see that one of the primary things that causes an accident, though from minor to severe, is wearing a seatbelt. So right there, you've landed on, you know, do we say to officers, you are no longer allowed to do a seatbelt violation because that's a quote-unquote low-level offense? And so there, and there is, and who decides that? So you have those issues and sort of we're trying to work through all of those things. So when we say de-emphasize and minimize, what we're really looking to more is like, one, trying to figure out what the list is, right? And that's some of the challenging work and working with the task force to see if we've hit the mark. But also knowing that there may be situations where a low-level offense may be something you need to stop someone for. Like, for example, if we landed on that seatbelts were a low-level offense, but you saw someone driving erratically without a seatbelt on, well, then maybe you'd want to stop them and initiate a stop because the combination of those two things together makes it a higher risk or they're in a school zone, behaved, you know, engaged in that or some other thing. So that's the challenge, and outright bans on things while they're clean and easy to apply sometimes, they leave the room for all those little situations that you didn't consider that we may want to have a real impact on.
And could you speak to, I have a vague understanding of what Vision Zero is, but could you just explain that and how it connects to Berkeley briefly? Thank you.
Right, it's just, it's just an initiative, in the simplest form, to reduce the number and severity of collisions in the city, recognizing that there's traffic engineering that can affect that, and then there's equity-driven policing efforts that can have an effect on that as well. And I'd be happy, there's a really good link to the city's work on that, and either I or someone can make sure we get that to the task force.
Commissioner Ho.
Thank you. I just, I have two questions. The first one is on searches, warrantless searches. Since a condition of probation or parole typically will involve the right for law enforcement to search, and I see that the policy that was referenced in the presentation, that BPD has a policy that an officer should not just ask the question, are you on probation or parole? But do so if, I think there's reasonable reason to believe that, I'm sorry, I forget the exact language, but they can't just ask. Is that information that would be captured? So in other words, every time an officer asks that question, would that be recorded in some way? And maybe I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, no, please. I'm not sure I'll answer the question, but no longer will. Like, for example, prior to February of this year, if an officer observed someone who they knew from their work in their beat or from a prior contact knew that person was on probation or parole, they could initiate a stop on that person just for that reason and conduct a probation or parole search. That's legally approved or legally authorized by state law. That is no longer within policy in our department to initiate a stop on that. Asking someone whether they are in probation or parole without some other factor that drives them to believing that has, that that is the issue or that, you know, some other investigative factor driving into that, they are not asking that question.
Okay. Because I think what my question is getting at, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time articulating it, is whether that question is going to be disproportionately asked of people of color. Like, how will we know that? If they ask the question, it results in a, you know, maybe it results in a search that doesn't turn up anything, there's not going to really be a record that that happened, if that makes sense.
That data would appear in the REPA data that a search was conducted based, I mean, you wouldn't know necessarily that they asked the question, but you would know that they conducted the search because of, if that was the reason why they conducted the search.
Okay.
But no, we don't, we don't currently have it. We don't currently mark down every time they ask that question in any other way other than via the REPA data.
I see. Thank you. My other question is, I was able to find the complaint form on your website, and I'm wondering if there's a way to actually complain and protect your anonymity because it looks like it asks for your name, your address, and your phone number.
Right, so we will accept a complaint where you don't provide your information. It becomes challenging if at no point will you engage in the process. So like, if you don't leave a phone number, it won't identify yourself. Obviously, the investigators that pursue the complaint, whether it be PRC or the Police Department, have to at some point talk to the person that's making that complaint. But there is a system in place where you could call and just say, I'm not willing to give my name, but I want to report that this incident is occurring, and this is what my concern is.
Okay. Okay, I think there may be actually a way to make your form consistent with like the phone process too, as, you know, maybe somebody, the name is optional, but a way to contact them if they want to have a discussion, but thank you.
I'd be happy to bring that back, bring that back and see if we can get that accomplished.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lutzke.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and sharing an update on this. I first just want to start by addressing Commissioner Hager's question a little bit about Vision Zero. I was a member of the Vision Zero Community Task Force that helped develop the Vision Zero Action Plan for the city. So I just actually think it would be helpful to provide a little bit of information. So I think, as most of you know, I'm a public health researcher, and Vision Zero is fundamentally a public health approach to reducing traffic violence on our streets. And I think the really key elements of it are that traditionally we think of traffic deaths as inevitable. That's why often people call them accidents. And many people in, who are working to reduce these collisions, that's one of the reasons that we really dislike the term accidents. Vision Zero really is about saying that traffic deaths and severe injuries are preventable. A lot of times, I think we expect humans to behave perfectly, and that's just not possible. Humans are fallible, and Vision Zero really takes what's called a safe systems approach to take into account that human behavior is fallible, right? That we have to build in systems to make sure that we're not just relying on human behavior and that we, in a way, are asking to take away the responsibility for traffic safety from individual good behaviors and make it be like a self, a system that is safe for people to move around in. And what's really key about that is that, is that Vision Zero primarily takes an engineering infrastructure approach to trying to save lives and prevent the most severe and fatal injuries resulting from collisions. So what we're not trying to do with Vision Zero is prevent every little fender bender that happens. We're really focusing on the absolute most severe and fatal collisions. And because of that, we're not asking people to behave properly. And the main thing about that is that enforcement is actually not the most key element here. Enforcement is really about, are we checking people on their perfect human behavior? And we, you know, folks who are really Vision Zero advocates are really focusing on, how do we make streets be safe for people to walk, drive, bike, scooter, play around in without having to make sure everyone is always acting perfectly? And so when we put forward the Vision Zero, And so when we put forward the Vision Zero Action Plan, actually, it was, engineering is the very first priority, followed by education, because education is important, although again, you're relying on human behavior. And the enforcement action of the Vision Zero policy was actually left unfinished because the task force, the community task force was really insistent that the enforcement actions need to be driven by a community-engaged process before any enforcement actions are put forward to decide, you know, how we're going to go about this. So that's just a framing, and, and on that note, I wanted to ask you, Chief Lewis, I see that the, there is a working group formed around deciding which actions are, which enforcement actions are based on safety and which are, you know, but I heard you say, Sergeant Lee, that that was an internal BPD working group. And that's really concerning to me, that transportation seems to not be involved, given that transportation is the lead agency for Vision Zero, and they're the ones who have analyzed the data. And just a quick note on that, you know, Chief Lewis, you talked a little bit about seatbelt use, and while that's certainly true, like, for example, on, on highways, that these very high-speed crashes result in severe injury and death to people not wearing seatbelts, overwhelmingly, the people who are killed and injured severely on our streets are pedestrians and bicyclists, and whether or not they're wearing a seatbelt is irrelevant. And we know, because the Transportation Division has actually done the data analysis showing the violations that caused the most severe and fatal injuries, and they are drivers driving at unsafe speed, drivers failing to yield to pedestrians at crosswalks, those sorts of things. And so, I guess I, my main question to you, my first que, main, first and main question is, why is this an internal BPD task force? And why is it not led by transportation?
Right, just to be clear, that this task force does include members of our Traffic Bureau who are working very closely on the Burke dot work, on, working with the Department, Division of Transportation, working with Fareed, really embracing the, the items that are in the Vision Zero Initiative. So this work is not being done without consultation and, and information based on the relationships and collaborations we have with other city departments, that's, that's a very important part of it. Our, our task at hand right now is to identify what we, from an investigative standpoint, you know, using those tools also, think that, we think the list should be for the low-level offenses. Then, once we've identified that, then the expectation would be is that we talk and meet with the Fair and Impartial Policing Task Force, that we carry that probably back to, to Burke dot specifically, or, or to Transportation specifically, to have them take a look at it also. But I will share with you the meetings that I've been in with, with those folks. They have looked to us to start to make the lists and identify what we think fits on there. So I, I hear you very much, and I, I'm very interested in, in continuing that collaboration, but that's, that is ongoing, and, and I think they're also looking to us for some of our expertise around that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I would heartily recommend that Eric Anderson, who's leading Vision Zero for the city, actually be part of those, rather than it just be members of the Traffic Bureau who are in consultation. Like, there should be someone in the room, in my, in my opinion. My second question is actually around the accessibility of those data. There's been a lot of efforts, and I really, really applaud them, to get the CAD data and the STOP data and the REPA data, all of that up on the open portal. I know that collision data are reported to CHP and come out in the form of SWITTER's data. There's a significant delay, there's often major gaps, and often, a lot of the data elements that are collected at the city or whatever jurisdiction level are not included. I would be, I would love to see the collision data become part of the open portal data so that average Joe citizens who are interested in this can actually look at the data. And on the, a second point, this is something that we actually brought up in the Vision Zero process, is whether or not, we know that in the city of San Francisco, their PD was open to adding fields to their collision report forms to answer some of the most important policy questions that the city was facing, which I would say are, is the topic of, of this task force. And figuring out, so, I know that there are elements that can't be taken away, and that's fine, but they, they received permission to add elements to their form, things such as, there's, you know, at least when they were doing it, I don't know whether it's changed, you know, is the user on a scooter, a skateboard, those sorts of things, those were previously not on the form, and they added that. Is, was, is one of the drivers involved, a Uber or Lyft driver? Those sorts of things, there are many policy questions that our city would like to answer that involve collisions, and I think that just having, you know, again, a closer collaboration, I look forward to the presentation from Liam and Fareed later, but really, really implementing, you know, and integrating what the, what the Traffic Bureau is doing with what Vision Zero efforts are doing, and really actually being in the same room.
I, I actually appreciate all the suggestions, and I will definitely check in. I don't, it should be no issue to put that SWITTER data up, back up on our, on our open data portal. I'll check in on the feasibility about that, that's a great, it's a great idea. Really, our goal is, you know, my vision is, at some point, being able to launch a dashboard that really sort of encompasses all these things, and gets as much as the data that we're allowed to share up and visible. I know we have a lot of really bright people in the city that want to help us move to meaningful change, and, and having data is one way to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Optin.
Chief Lewis. Now that we've seen the, the slides this evening in a very clear way that one could read, they seem substantially less concerning than they did when I was trying to decipher them with those blue balloons over them. However, I have to wonder why the slides you've shown us this evening don't say anything about the departments doing either of the two most obvious things that it could do to investigate the, the reasons for the racial disparity in policing. Number one thing it could do is look at the, the, you know, the detain, the stop records of individual officers to see whether these racial disparities are concentrated in one, two, or five, or some, some minority of the officers in, on the force. And if they are concentrated, then one can look at the assignments those officers have to see whether they have special assignments that are sending them into areas where they're only, where they're seeing, you know, all or mostly minorities, and don't have a chance to detain people who are Anglos. And if, if you find that, that there is no good explanation for why this minority of your force is doing what it's doing, you can call them in and ask them why they're doing it. And I'm sure they will have explanations, and then you can think about those, and think about whether they are legitimate, and think about there are things you could do something about. That's the first thing that the, that the police force could do, and I'm, I'm surprised that I didn't read on your slides that it's already done that. The second thing it could do is to, is to go back to the, to the officers, the, the minority of your force that is causing most of the problem, if that's the case. Go back to them one by one, and saying, "Your arrest records, your detention records, your search and stop records are out of line with what your compatriots are doing, and this is embarrassing us. And I need to understand why you're doing it, and I need you to think about why you're doing it, and think about whether you want to continue doing it. And if you, if you must continue doing it, maybe you better think about whether this is the best police force for you to be doing it in." I have a hunch that that could cause a, a sudden and dramatic change in the disparities that we're seeing. Maybe it would, and maybe it wouldn't, but surely, it would be the first thing that a, a manager would think of doing if he's, if he sees that some people that he or she is managing are doing something that's out of line in terms of the aspirations of the organization. And yet I don't see any, any indication that that's even been thought of, much less implemented.
What you're, what you're referring to very much is what the purpose of our early warning system is, is to identify where problems are arising, to catch them early, to have counseling and training, and ident, and have those conversations when, when people seem to not be on the right track, when they are not exemplifying our, our core values. So, you know, I apologize if that wasn't clear when we went through that section, but that is the intent of that section.
Well, the section is entirely general, but what I spoke of was very specific. And from the generalities in the, in the slide, you can't tell whether that's being done, or has been done, or not. But if it hasn't been started, I frankly can't understand why it hasn't been.
Commissioner, is that your comments from them?
That, that's my comment, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you, Chief, for being with us again to further clarify. Just one question for the full set of the Fair and Impartial Policing recommendations that were approved. Is there a published list of, of their recommendations and the schedule for completion? Of course, it would be approximate, and it's going to be quarters or years into the future, but have you given a timeframe? And if, and I understand we're just in the beginning stages of this, if there isn't one yet, could that be done? Could that be published in a public place for when we feel the, the, you know, pilot programs at the least would be up and running to address all of those recommendations?
And maybe I, I didn't quite understand the beginning of the question, but if, if the question is, do we think we're making clear progress and reportable progress on the recommendations? And that's why I tried to include on each of those items where we see us landing on implementation. And, and many of them are, are policy changes which don't take a significant amount of time other than, I'm ensuring that if there's meet and confer issues, we resolve those, staff time to complete that work. And then, you know, issuance time and training time on some of them. So those are all, you know, accomplishable in, in a relatively short period of time. What takes longer, or the things that will take longer, can be those ones that have more challenging questions, like, you know, what is our list of low-level offenses going to end up looking like? Or, you know, you know, what kind of data model is going to be built with the help of a consultant that truly does not further cause disparate treatment, but ensures that data and evidence-based reasons are used in the work that we do, and not implicit bias? So those things can take longer, but, and, and that's sort of the goal of having quarterly reports to council, regular collaboration with the task force to ensure that we're on the right track, talking about where we are with, with the different implementation items. So I'm not sure if I answered your question.
What, well, what I'm wondering is, because we know what that list, I think, is it, is it 15 items? Anyway, some long list of the fair and impartial things, it's true, some of them can happen quickly, and then we're in the stages of watching the data come in to see what is changing due to those changes, which is great. Could we see a tick mark against, a publicly published, tick mark against the things that have been completed? And for the things that haven't, if you want to get granular for the public of some of the main steps to accomplish them, that's great. If that's not possible, or just brings up more questions than, than it's worth, that's fine too, but then could we just have timeframes for when the longer-term elements of the fair and impartial recommendations are targeted to be completed?
Yeah, I can certainly pull that information off each of the slides and put that in one, one place to see, you know, together. I'd be happy to do that. I can add that as an addendum to, when we get you a, a, a non-colored background for this presentation. I'll have a, a, a page at the back that includes each item by when we anticipate the completion date, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, great. And then, could there, this is following on Buna's question from quite a bit earlier. What is the accountability structure or chain of command if things need to be chased or, you know, moved forward because it's not meeting that public target of completion dates?
I mean, I think that the whole point of this work, or what's, what's going to be important in this work, not the whole point, is that we may not know that we're on target, or we may not know that the thing we have implemented is, is, is having a, a, a real impact, that we may need to, you know, readjust and, and move in a different direction, or reassess whether something's working at all, and just, you know, being aware and being flexible to that. And, and, you know, I want to see meaningful progress in our work in this, and meaningful, move towards implementation, but I don't want to do something without thoughtfulness. And so, you know, I want, I'm trying to create space that if we hit something that either stands in our way, whether that is some legal issue, some meet and confer issue, we find we have a, a converse effect than we intended, a negative effect instead of a positive effect in something that we implement, you know, I, I want to leave space and time to pivot from that and, and reassess and make sure we get back on track.
That makes great sense, and I think course correcting is something that, a lot of this work is, you know, no municipalities are perhaps ahead of us, or, you know, we don't, there's not a lot of models out there, so what we're doing is, is very forward-leaning, as you've mentioned. But I, I just want there to be some public statement about if, maybe we all in Berkeley have some concerns about things just getting stalled, and I know that we're all going to be working hard toward making sure that doesn't happen, but if it should, what would be the recourse? You know, is, is the city manager involved, or is it just all in your hands? What, what would happen if things do stall? Is the question I'm wondering if there's a public answer for, that could be on the target completion date list?
Well, I, I'm very clear that my responsibility is to carry out, you know, the very clear direction from the Mayor's Task Force and the City Council on implementing these recommendations. I would expect that if we can't accomplish them, and I can't provide a reasonable explanation for why I haven't accomplished it, or a reasonable explanation to why we don't think it's appropriate to accomplish it, then I'm going to have to answer for that. I mean, I don't, the buck stops with me, I'm responsible for implementing these things, I'm responsible for ensuring the department carries these things out. There's no other place to put the responsibility for that but with our department to carry those things out. Or to call out when we can't for some reason and explain why, like I said, that, that reason is either going to be good enough or not good enough, but, but, but that's where the responsibility lies.
Great, I appreciate hearing that in, in detail, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner.
I think what you just shared, Chief Lewis, that is very helpful to hear, and I kind of want to use what you said to sort of connect and to reflect on what was presented on one and four, that Commissioner Lutzke already talked about a little bit. But what I'm, when I see that presentation of how you're approaching low-level offenses, I'm sensing some obfuscation and some lack of clarity when you say, "Based on grants that we have." Like, I'm not, as somebody who knows more about Vision Zero and traffic safety, those things are not making sense to me, they're not connecting in my head. It doesn't seem like the right approach. I think also the example of seatbelt tells me that, again, there's, something is not connecting there because when we're looking at Vision Zero data that we do have right now about what causes collisions, not wearing a seatbelt doesn't rise to the top. So all of these are a little bit of a red flag for me. You know, this is part of the reason why we're pushing for Burke dot, because we want for- You know, this is part of the reason why we're pushing for Burke dot, because we want folks who know this stuff to be, you shouldn't have to learn everything about everything, right? So, but you are going to be doing this for a little bit. And we want to make sure that it's being done the right way. As you, as we already know, traffic stops are the most common interactions that folks have with police. And we don't want somebody to be stopped for not wearing a seatbelt unless they're going really fast. I understand that it's complex, but a big part of Vision Zero is that it's data-driven. So there is a little bit of interplay between the data we're collecting and how we're making decisions. And we need to solve the sort of chicken and egg situation. But even now with the data that we do have, I'm not hearing the right answers for who's involved, who's reviewing this list and the kind of things that the list of low-level offenses is being based on. So my question though, I had asked last time, I don't know what the best way to do this, if I should like email David or email you. But I would also like to follow up on the question I'd asked about who does training for your traffic enforcement, for your traffic bureau? Who does the training for them, I think?
Yeah, I still owe you an answer back on the different trainings we use. Most of those trainings are post-certified trainings. But certainly, I know I still owe you that. If I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
And if I could sort of, just to be clear, and I'm sorry again if it wasn't clear, I am not the expert in making the list of low-level offenses. You know, while I have a, you know, 22 years of experience in this line of work, I'm not the expert in that. And I certainly am relying on the experts both internally and externally to make those decisions. And so when I share that there's, and that's very much why we have the working groups established. And I think it's a good point to continue to ensure that we are asking for input and feedback and collaboration with our other, our partners in this work. My expectation is that the experts bring a proposal that then comes through, that's reviewed with all these other pieces, that, you know, making sure that, you know, racial equity has been considered and that, and all those things are considered in the final, you know, proposal that we have. That's the process. And I apologize if the examples I used, you know, either didn't resonate or caused concern to you, that that's not my intent, you know, and I don't want to misspeak, mistake for that working group. And I also have been trying to work really hard that when I come and do these presentations, it's, I think it's important for you to hear about our overall, the departmental intent. But I think it's also important for you to hear from the folks that are actually doing the work. And that's why I asked Sergeant Lee to come and participate, because he's one of the people that is organizing these groups. And I think it's very valuable for all of us to sort of be engaged in that work and for him to be able to hear sort of what the concerns are and what's driving it so that they can direct their work better. But also for you guys to have an opportunity to just kind of get familiar with the folks that are doing this work.
I welcome Sergeant Lee to come and speak to the Transportation Commission. We also have a Burke dot subcommittee, if, you know, whatever works with schedules, either of those places. I think we would welcome that opportunity to comment. Because, you know, we also push our Public Works Department and our city to think about Vision Zero, right? So like, not one person has all the answers, but together we can figure it out. So Sergeant Lee, you're totally welcome to come join us. I'm the chair of the commission, so do please reach out. Thank you.
Commissioner Fine.
One thing that occurred to me, I mean, in this context, we're talking about traffic stops, but we could be talking about diverting other low-level offenses such as ones that deal with substance use. And what concerns me is that, yes, we have to divert that. But what is in place in order to get people the kind of treatment they need? And there's an acknowledgement here that Berkeley, for instance, has a very weak infrastructure to get people into treatment. And that through the Division of Mental Health, there is really not much of a substance use program in place or harm reduction services or medically assisted treatment. So my concern with the police is, well, yes, you may want to divert from low-level offenses, but how are you shifting your thinking in order to consider where these people can go to reduce some of the harms with substance use in a way that may get them to start decreasing the use of the drugs, not get them in so much legal, criminal involvement? And so that overarching kind of comprehensive thought about substance use or about police culture, whatever, I'm wondering like where that conversation is happening?
I mean, again, I think you strike very deeply at something that has always resonated with me in the work I've done and that I have heard echoed with many officers over the years is we are always hungry and thirsty for good resources to provide our community members. And, you know, I can recall when, you know, Thunder Road came into existence and how excited officers were to have an opportunity to have another option for someone who was dealing with substance abuse rather than incarceration. And we are always hopeful that, you know, really impactful changes can be made, you know, with some of the mental health services and substance abuse services that are out there. And I think that's something that we are in need of and it would allow officers that either it's people they come into contact with to have other diversionary options, you know, instead of having to employ the only tools that we may have in certain situations when someone is either a danger to themselves or a danger to others, being left, you know, without options in public.
Commissioner. Sorry, Tim, was that you?
No, I was just going to add that I think the listening sessions are going to provide information that comes out of them that will be very sensitive to specific communities that can connect in a way when you divert offenses, you can do it in a culturally responsive and safe way as well, in addition to getting the treatment. And that may really help in establishing more rapport and trust with the communities.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I believe it was around six years ago that when we first started to get reports around racial profiling in our city. And so we've had since then three chiefs. And what I'm not hearing is, at what point are we as a community going to say no more? You know, no more? And then put strategies in place that quickly can turn a police force around in terms of really believing that this city has zero tolerance for racial profiling or racism? I'm really very concerned in any other organization if incidents like that were to occur again and again and again. I don't believe that those people would be working for that, that organization or division. I just had to say that, mean no disrespect at all.
There's absolutely none taken in that comment. I have no desire to have anyone in our workforce be a racist and be allowed to use their authority and power to present that to the community in no way, shape or form.
Mr. Melvido.
Hi, Chief. Sorry, I just came back in and I missed your presentation, but I was very excited to have you back. Last meeting, you asked me to ask the question that I asked then today, if possible. And I wanted to follow up on the question. And the question is, you know, is there any correlation with any sort of officer complaints or misconduct that is related to the number of trainings that they've had or the type of trainings that they've had? And I was wondering if that's something that you could answer for me.
You know what? We are going to talk about checks and balances specifically with the complaint process and discipline. And I want to give that question a really thorough answer. So what I'm going to ask actually is to get, see if you could maybe send me an email. It gives me that in writing. I think we're talking about that in the second meeting in June. And we can get into that in depth.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. White, Ms. Cole, can we go to the public comment?
Yes, we can. Looks like right now we have two hands raised. We'll allow the first person in. Emily, we're good, so. Emily, you should be able to speak.
Thank you. Just going back to this question about scheduling, quarterly reports sound extremely ambitious. We used to have two crime reports every year. There was an annual one that was for the full year. And then there was a six-month report for the most recent, well, it was a six-month report. But we've gone down now to only one crime report every year, so we're kind of getting less trend data. So it'll be amazing if we actually can get quarterly data and analysis, especially because those, the annual reports are very high level, not really any analysis, just the UCR numbers. So I guess the point is, I'm excited about those reports. And to the scheduling question, it would be great if somehow there was a posted schedule so that people knew when the targets were for those analytical reports. And thank you, everyone, for your work.
Thank you, Emily. We will now bring in George Letnich. George, you should be able to speak.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the task force for this comprehensive presentation and discussion. I have a number of things to say which are very positive. Unfortunately, they are all positive about the commissioner's comments. I want to call out by name, and I'm not impressed by the staff's presentation, and I'll say why. First, going through Commissioner Lindheim's comment about the disparities, belying the bias is illegal. I think he's raising an important point that is not sufficient to say, yes, we know it's illegal, but still the patterns remain. And I think Commissioner Chima's point is the same. We need a real answer and not just, well, maybe it's, I don't even hear the chief saying, well, it's implicit bias. Just really no answer at all, no real answer. That's not acceptable. And I thank you for raising that. Commissioner Luskers' point about stakeholders must be consulted is very apt. And that refers not only to the transportation issue, but all the issues. And to say that the department is working closely with the working group, Fair and Impartial Working Group, it's not enough to make a long presentation to the working group and say, we're consulting, taking back a couple of points. This needs to be developed together with the working group. As was stated by Commissioner Hyde around, I believe, around developing the policies around Burke dot and so forth. Commissioner Opton, the question for the chief about the timeline, I think, remains to be answered. To say that, well, we'll just take the dates that are on the various slides and put them into one place, there's no timeline that can be developed that way. There's not enough data on there to really understand. You know, take the example of the EIS, to say that the policy should be changed by August is not enough of a timeline. We need to know when it's projected to be up and running. That's what we really need to know, because that is critical. As the chief pointed out, that is critical to addressing these issues of concern. And again, that needs to be developed in conjunction with the task force. I think that a few things that remain to be stated that are really of concern around the consent.
George, if you can wrap up your comments.
Well, I'll have to put some of this in writing, just say, that consent, written consent, it's fine to say it is developed, the policy is developed, but that policy that exists has massive flaws in it. For example, it requires, or it allows the officer the ability to search not only the person, the car, and also the home. It's a massive giveaway of power to the department. And I'll be working on a written update for the group as well.
Thank you, George. And if you send that to, your update to Shamika or myself or to the commission email, we will be glad to forward it to the commission.
Thank you, George.
We'll now bring in Kit Saginaw.
Thank you.
It's been a very helpful discussion. It's, I'm, this group is doing a really good work and the attention that you're giving to these issues is so important. I'm concerned at how slowly the process of making change is moving and sometimes seems like it's not really changing very much. A resident of Berkeley, Charles Clark, recently sent a item, a memo, to the Police Review Commission, it's published on their site, showing that the arrest rate is something that's not, the stop rate, but who gets arrested by the Berkeley police? And in the past several years, it's been around 49% of the people arrested are African-American. Now, I know that reasons for why that percentage is so high are very complicated. Should just stop arresting, you know, should have a quota and they're not going to arrest more than 8%, you know, whatever. This is, it's very complicated. But that's the kind of statistic that shows that there are not get solved this month or next month or this year, people's lives are being terrible ways.
Kit, your mic is kind of going in and out.
I'm sorry, should I try it one more time or?
Yeah, if we can, yeah, I'm gonna stop time and give you a minute fifteen. You're going in and out the past 20 seconds or so.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, if I stop my video, perhaps that will make it better. Let me try doing that. I don't know that I know how to do that. I'm sorry. That's not going to help. I'll just try again. The arrest rate of Berkeley police, publicly available statistics show that 49% of the people arrested by the Berkeley police are African-American. And there's another point, as with the stop rate, that shows that there's a real problem of what's happening. And this affects people's lives in terrible ways. And therefore, it is very urgent to make changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are all the raised hands. Sure, my, there's no one else with a raised hand to speak.
Thank you. Misses, are there any further questions for the chief or related to this Ivan? Seeing none. Thank you to the department and interim chief Louis for your presentation. Certainly, many longstanding concerns remain. And one thing I'll say, taking a lesson from my legal studies classes, is there's the law in the books and then there's a law in action. And for most things, we can assume that police will be able to help us with law and action. If there's some sort of criminal activity, the law will be in action. But the law must also be in action to protect communities, protect communities like mine, where the law is supposed to stop racial disparities, the law is supposed to stop racism, and it does not work currently. So we must address that. We can't just say the law's on the books. I know you're committed to that. But the process will continue and there's much more work to be done. So, thank you. And yes, let's move to the presentation. And yes, let's move to presentation on Burk dot. And I think Director Public Works Liam Garland is here with us tonight.
Nathan, do you want to hear from Karen from the Transportation Commission first?
Thank, thank you for reminding me. Yes, let's hear from Karen first.
Okay, let me bring her in. Karen, good evening. You should be able to speak.
Good evening. Thank you. Is our Liam and Fareed actually presenting this evening? That was my understanding.
Yes.
Yes.
Would it be possible for me to comment after their presentation? So that you have their presentation as context for my comments? Because our comments are actually about what they're presenting about from the Transportation Commission.
Okay, that sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Yes, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Garland. You, you may be muted or we can't hear you unfortunately. No, still can't hear you. No. I've been there.
How about now?
Yes.
Very weird. Okay, commissioners, good evening. I am Liam Garland, Public Works Director. Sorry about that technical hiccup. I also want to introduce Fareed Javindel, our Transportation Manager. Fareed, could you give folks a quick wave? Thank you. I've had a chance to work with several of you, but more of you I have not worked with. So I'd like to just take a quick few seconds to introduce myself. I've been with Public Works as the director here for about ten months. A Berkeley resident, two kids in public schools. My wife's affiliated with the university, went to law school here. Started out as a teacher in Compton, California. Litigated civil rights cases focused on housing discrimination for more than a few years in and out of education nonprofits, really with the, the key theme being around public service. And so I'm feeling super privileged and lucky to be doing that work here in my own community. Tonight, we've got a presentation which I'm going to share my screen right now. Just give me one moment. Okay, can you give me a thumbs up if you're seeing my slide? Okay, thank you. So this presentation does not have new material over the, the staff report that was shared with you several days ago. We just formatted a little bit differently and simplified some of the content excised just for a speed and efficiency sake. I'll run through the presentation and then Fareed and I will be available for input and questions. So what we're going to cover about in the next twenty minutes or so is a little bit of the why of Burk dot, the process to date, an overview of organization and staffing, and then some approaches to Burk dot and imbuing racial justice into our transportation programs and services. And the most important part is to hear from you in terms of getting input and having your questions answered related to the staff work on Burk dot to date. In terms of the why of Burk dot, four things really have stood out, both from the referral that got this process started all the way through to the commission and public comments received to date. And that is a big focus on racial justice in services, staffing and outcomes, discussions of equitable mobility regardless of race, age, gender, wealth or ability. And this is really about thinking about Berklians being able to get around, regardless of demographics, being able to get to work, get to recreating and feeling safe and welcomed and belonging in our transportation system on the way to those important places. Safety is obviously a huge piece of this Burk dot conversation. It's just that it's not the traditional model of just thinking about traffic safety, but also expanding that out to trying to reduce institutional violence, including trying to keep folks from incarceration or even economic violence related to the impact of fines, for example, on families who can't afford to pay them. As Commissioner Luskor also more articulately than I shared, there's a strong public and environmental health aspect to this. I'll just add a little bit to that on the environmental health side, which is the more our residents are engaged in active transportation like walking and biking, those have good health outcomes, also reduced carbon emissions, obviously, which helps in terms of climate change and fewer pollutants around us. In terms of advancing Burk dot, the conversations really focused around existing transportation functions and how they're organized, questions of leadership and vision, how we can reduce silos, and then align goals and responsibilities between transportation functions. And there's been a subtext too, which I'll just make explicit, which is to make sure that what is happening that's working, we don't want to lose that through whatever comes next. In terms of a review of what's occurred to date, the council referral obviously kicked us out, kicked us off in July. That happened to be, I think, my first or second council meeting as part of the city staff. Soon after, we engaged with some of the members of the Burk dot coalition to exchange information, exchange briefings. In about December, we brought a consultant onboard to conduct some best practices research. We set up informational interviews with representatives from five other cities and really started diving into different models for a DOT and this approach to imbuing racial justice into our transportation work. We summarized some of that material on February eighteenth to the Transportation Commission, got quite a bit of really productive feedback. In between our Transportation Commission and Public Works Commission meeting on March fourth, that is when the fair and impartial policing working groups recommendations made it to council. And so that's an important part of this is, I think, as commissioners have recognized tonight that the Burk dot and the traffic stops discussion are very closely tied, even if they're on slightly separate tracks, as you saw with our chief presenting earlier on that same item. With that, I'm going to keep us moving along in terms of where, an overview of our department structure, and then we'll touch on where some transportation functions sit. So here you see our Public Works Department. There's me as the Public Works Director reporting up through the city manager. I've got seven divisions inside of Public Works. You'll see to the left there, the four of them. There's the Transportation Division, Engineering Administration, and Solid Waste and Recycling. And then you have three divisions reporting up to an operations manager at Facilities, Equipment and Streets and Utilities. If you compare our Transportation Division to other transportation divisions of similarly sized cities, our Transportation Division has a lot of responsibility, a lot of span of control right now. The maintenance function is inside of it, and that oftentimes is not one that sits within transportation. Also, parking is one that you'll see in different cities, ends up in different places. It can be in a city manager's office, community development, it can be in Public Works and sometimes in police departments. And so that's a quick overview of how Public Works is laid out organizationally. And here we see a snapshot of some of the positions that staff have been looking at to consider for moving into a new Burk dot. So at the top there, you see the most obvious ones, which are in our existing transportation division. That's forty-three full-time employees, a mix of traffic engineers, transportation planners, traffic maintenance personnel, et cetera. Then you have the Traffic Bureau that our chief mentioned earlier there with several motor officers, a lieutenant, a sergeant, and admin analyst. And then within that unit, you also have a group of crossing guards. There are about fifteen part-timers who sum up to about 3.7 FTEs. And then within that unit too, you've got a parking enforcement. And I just want to flag something, this is covered in the staff report. But we did have quite a few parking enforcement officers show up at our Public Works Commission meeting to express their strong desire to stay with the police department and not, not be moved out of it. So that's one thing that's come up through our public process to date. You'll also see on the, the bottom of this slide, some of the existing Public Works functions that could be a part of a new Burk dot wherever it sits, including the planning of our paving project or the maintenance of our streets, streetlights and sidewalks. Those are all very key parts of our transportation system. It might be a logical fit for Burk dot. Summed up, it's about a hundred positions and fifty million dollars. So a significant amount of positions and budget being considered for a potential Burk dot. Now let's talk about the, or cover the, how to approach the standing up of a Burk dot. We see three approaches. One is to look at our current engineering, I'm sorry, our current Transportation Division and essentially have that be the new Burk dot. Instead of a Department of Transportation, it would be a Division of Transportation, but a Burk dot nonetheless. Option B would be a Burk doty, which sounds a little bit funny. And that's because it's got an I at the end, and that's for a Berkeley Department of Transportation and infrastructure. And so under this formulation, you'd essentially be swapping out Public Works and now you've got, would have a new Burk doty in its place. And then the third option is a standalone Burk dot department separate from Public Works reporting up through the city manager. So those are the, the three approaches that we've taken a look at. And so far, through our work with commissions, the feedback we've gotten so far is on these three approaches and not new ones that have been introduced. When we looked at these three approaches, we tried to analyze them in a few different ways. One is to think about it from this point of view of imbuing racial justice into our transportation policy programs and services, and whether one version helped or not advance racial justice. We couldn't really see a difference. We saw that either of the three options could succeed or could fail in terms of this key progress around racial justice. On mission and vision, our analysis is a little bit different. And again, this is based on feedback we've received to date, work with our consultants and some thinking of our own and the talking with folks from other cities. There, there's a question, I think, for the task force and our council around how satisfied is our community with our existing transportation vision? So we've got the Berkeley Strategic Transportation Plan adopted in two eighteen, twenty eighteen, Vision Zero, which was adopted in twenty twenty, or the Vision Zero Action Plan was adopted in twenty twenty, the pedestrian plan adopted in twenty twenty-one. And if those, the visions laid out in those documents, if those aren't sufficient or we need to veer away from them, then it makes sense that that standalone Burk dot would represent a brand-new course. If that's not exactly true, then maybe options A or B make more sense. In terms of prioritization and coordination, the original referral and the discussions we've had with our commissions really highlighted people's sense that a Burk dot would make clear how important transportation was as an issue in the city. So making sure transportation's in the title of that department and also reporting up through the city manager. I think what we've learned through the process is there might be some trade-offs there too, which is right now, when you think about our streets, sitting inside of Public Works, together, we've got engineers who are working in our engineering division, running capital projects that very much affect our streets. You've got engineers in our transportation division, along with transportation planners, who are also working on projects very important to our transportation system. And right now, there's incentives for those folks to collaborate because they're in, within one department. There's a potential that as you do a standalone Burk dot, that maybe those incentives for collaboration actually go down. It's potential, it's not a certainty, but it's a potential. We also tried to look at the individual functions that could be moved to a Burk dot to see if any of the configurations made more sense one over another. And again, we didn't see a clear rationale there. I think one area where the options A, B, and C for a Burk dot really did get distinguished is in terms of thinking of implementation risk and then transition and ongoing costs. And here you can see the two axes that show the three approaches. On the upper right, you've got the standalone, separate Burk dot department. And there you've got the highest implementation risk. And that's primarily because you're picking up functions out of existing departments and putting them in a brand-new standalone department, which is just going to be more complicated. It's also going to be more complicated, more costly in terms of getting the new director funded along with the back office functions that are going to go along with that and turn into ongoing costs into the future. And then if you move over to the left for option B at the Burk doty, you're going to have a little bit higher transition and ongoing costs, some more risk because you're doing a more department-wide transformation. And then option A being the lowest implementation risk and lowest transition and ongoing cost. Doesn't say that one of these should be picked over the other. It's just these are how we see the, some of the risks in terms of moving forward with any individual one. I'm going to shift a little bit to how to imbue a racial justice lens in our transportation work. We look back at the original referral, heard from members of the public and our commissions, and landed on a working definition. And so I'm going to read it here, starting a few words in, which this would mean that all decisions, procedures and guidelines that govern transportation in this city would affirmatively work to reduce the burdens of racial inequities and mitigate structural harm put on people of color and create streets where people are safe, experienced, belonging and can thrive. This definition resonated with me because it really pointed on what, pointed to what we want to eliminate and then pointed to the environment we want to create for the users of our transportation system. Our next step was to think about how to ensure the racial justice lens was incorporated in the organization. And there, again, we looked at a couple of different approaches. One was essentially a new division. I shared earlier, we've got seven divisions inside of Public Works or a new Burk dot, which is to think about that, a new division within Burk dot being focused on racial justice and equity. That's option A. Option B is really focusing that responsibility on a person. And that would be the, a new Deputy Director of Transportation, Racial Justice and Equity. As mentioned in the staff report, we're already recommending in our, our budget for next fiscal year, a Deputy Director of Transportation that's very much related to the work around Burk dot and moving toward it. And so there's some synergy there with option B, but that doesn't preclude a move to option A at a later date. The next three slides are literally copying and pasting from our staff report. And this is really focused on a three-phased plan. This is something we heard of from some commissioners was the idea of not necessarily getting everything done as soon as possible, but instead thinking about a phased approach. but instead thinking about a phased approach. And so we phased our proposed actions in three parts going out about four years. This first phase is the first year, represents some ongoing work, as mentioned by commissioners and the police chief earlier in terms of coordinating on precision policing and this question of major and minor stops. Also, there's been a fair amount of activity by our council in terms of making recommendations to our legislators to both permit automated enforcement and also to provide more discretion to localities for on-traffic enforcement. And so we want to make sure we've got the time and space to really push those forward and monitor what's going on in Sacramento on them. I mentioned that June twenty twenty-one proposed budget change earlier to the Deputy Director of Transportation. We're also thinking a lot about the soliciting opinions of, about where Burke dot is going. And what we heard from our commissions was a real thirst to get voices who were not in the room and who would not show up to traditional meetings. And so we're thinking and strategizing about how to do that and have that work occur over the summer, and also about how it syncs up with the work of this task force and Nick Jr. We also learned along the way in this process that we had to do some internal work that when it comes to thinking about imbuing a racial justice lens in our work, we learned from some feedback from commissioners that that really started with thinking about our staff, particularly our staff of color, and career pathways for them within either a Burke dot and/or the Public Works Department. And so that got us thinking that next December, we'd make a budget request to bring in an expert to help us have that internal discussion that ultimately would end up with a racial justice and equity action plan. It'd be a two-part plan so that that first part was focused more inward on staff and having that important conversation. And then you'll see in out-years that Phase Two would be more focused externally. This three-part plan proposes to move forward with option A. That's the Berkeley Division of Transportation being stood up as a Burke dot with a Deputy Director of Transportation, Racial Justice, and Equity. As soon as January twenty twenty-two, there would be some financial impacts from doing so. What we like about this phased approach is it doesn't preclude moving to option B or option C at a later date. And in fact, depending on the reporting to council on our progress, that might inform those decisions later along the way. We also have heard loud and clear from commissioners about, really wanted to see more coordination between PD and our Vision Zero folks on data sharing and collision analysis. And that's something where we went back and forth in this and realized we just need more Vision Zero staff to do this work. And we're planning on submitting a budget proposal in next fiscal year's budget to help ensure this coordination and data sharing happens. Phase Two of the plan is focused again on the legislative advocacy. I want to spend a minute or two on the idea of a civilian traffic enforcement unit. This is something that the staff report spends some time on, and it may be precluded by existing state law. And so, again, our city council has approved advocacy at the state level to give us more discretion at a local level to do something like a civilian traffic enforcement unit. I think the question we've wrestled with at the commission level and in conversations with Fried and I and others is how to move forward a plan for a civilian traffic enforcement unit if you're not sure what the enabling legislation is going to say such a unit is going to have to be configured to be. And so there's a bit of a question on timing and the discussion at the council level about when to move forward with such a proposal. The next item, the December item about, this is December twenty twenty-two, about council considering adoption of Vision Zero Enforcement Policy. This is very much tied in with the idea of council's advocacy for automated enforcement for speeding violations. So we know that speeding-related crashes are a significant cause of fatalities and significant injuries here in Berkeley, and that automated enforcement might be a tool to help reduce speeding and therefore save lives. And if state law does change to permit this for a city like Berkeley, that's probably going to require us to move forward something conceived of in the Vision Zero Action Plan, but it's the development of that Vision Zero Enforcement Policy. Obviously, taking in a lot of the feedback we've gotten so far in terms of making sure enforcement was a tool of last resort. I already touched on, oh, I'm sorry, the completion of the Racial Justice and Equity Action Plan will be for late twenty-two as well. And then moving into twenty twenty-three, we'd make, get to council for a discussion about that civilian traffic unit and also see whether or not we were seeing progress in terms of state law changes on that score. There's an issue we haven't touched on yet, and that's around parking fines. It's definitely something that's come up in conversations, and we'd want to, we want to keep this in this three-part phased plan so that we can make sure we're thinking about how fines and parking rates, how we can ensure they're equitably applied and also not having disparate impacts on our residents. Finally, the last couple of years of the three-phase plan would be about finishing Part Two of the Racial Justice and Equity Action Plan, a big update to council in June twenty twenty-four, where it'd be a time to really take the temperature of how much progress had been made, what was remaining to do, and answering some of the remaining questions around the form of Burke dot or whether that civilian traffic enforcement unit should be stood up or not. And then a closure on the original Burke dot referral by June of twenty twenty-five. Thanks for bearing with me. I know that was a lot of content in those last three slides. And now anxious to hear what's missing from this. What areas for future research or due diligence would you recommend? Would love to hear more about which of the organizational approaches seem most likely to succeed and any input you've got on the draft plan. So I just want to thank you for the time. And remember, Fried and I are here to answer any questions you have or take any comments you got.
Thank you, Director Garland, commissioners.
Can we have Karen Perolik give her comments before we go?
Yes. And Karen, you're a panelist, so you can speak at any time.
Great, thank you so much. As mentioned, my name is Karen Perolik, and I'm Vice Chair of the Transportation Commission and was a member of the Burke dot Subcommittee of the Transportation Commission that looked at some of the recommendations that Liam and Fareed presented to us in February, as you mentioned. So we wanted to feed this into you all's conversation because our understanding is that the Burke dot referral, you know, is part of the reimagining Public Safety Omnibus Act. And so it really feeds into the work you're doing, so thank you for the opportunity. So hopefully David emailed you the written version of this. I was given, the Transportation Commission voted to allow me to speak on their behalf here. The written comments are, include some edits that we discussed verbally, and I'm verbally going to give to you, but I thought the written comments would be helpful for you to track as you're considering your own comments. So we, as the Berkeley Transportation Commission, wish to promote that we are both a transit-first city and a Vision Zero city. And as part of that, we support creating a new Burke dot. And that is based on successful models that we've seen, like the new Oak dot that was just created a couple of years ago, to give priority to all aspects of transportation and to fulfill the mandate of being both a transit-first and Vision Zero city. We recommend Organization Approach C, which is separating the Burke dot organization separate from the rest of the Public Works Division in order to achieve these mandates. And as far as the question about where racial equity accountability should sit, our recommendation is that it actually should sit in the new city department that was requested by city council, the Office of Racial Accountability, even though it's our understanding that hasn't been set up yet, but that that's where that should sit and that that office should hold the Director of Burke dot accountable for racial equity for the entire department. Our second major comment is that we believe the proposal so far does not actually meet the intention of the Public Safety Omnibus Reform Act as it doesn't address the racial equity lens particularly in regard to traffic enforcement as well as reducing and eliminating the practice of pretextual stops. And I can talk about, more about that later if you have questions. What I can say, I will say one thing on that note, that in the presentation today, Liam did include the number of officers in the Traffic Bureau in the previous presentations that were made to both the Transportation Commission and the Public Works Commission. Those numbers were not included. It was their statement that because they believe state law does not allow traffic enforcement outside of the police department, they didn't even have those numbers. So the addition of those numbers is new information that the Transportation Commission has not seen. There's also a question that came up actually in your meeting earlier today about who's determining how to focus on safety and who's defining safety. Where does safety from road violence fit in? And who's determining how to best create an environment safe from road violence, which may be different from other types of safety? And because of that, we recommend that Burke dot be responsible for defining safety for traffic safety and traffic enforcement, or along with a partner lead for other types of safety. And that's directly in relation to the conversation earlier with the the police chief around defining low-level safety offenses and what's actually important for traffic safety and what, what should be the priorities that actually of enforcement when it's used to actually create an environment safe from traffic violence. And lastly, although I didn't hear it presented tonight, it was presented as part of the report to us. We find it concerning in the report to us that the transferring the parking enforcement staff to the new Burke dot, that it was reported to us that making that move would be problematic for the racial composition of the police department, which appears to us to be about numbers and racial composition and not about real change. So those are the comments. I'm happy to, if any of that did not make sense or anybody has any questions that I can, I can explain that as we discussed it, that's Transportation Commission, I'm happy to do so. And thank you all for taking the time to let us share the Transportation Commission's comments tonight.
Thank you, Karen. And yes, if you're able to stay with us as we have the discussion, I'm sure commissioners will point towards you for, for some extra clarification. But yeah, I just have any questions for Director Garland, Fareed, commissioners? Commissioner Goach.
I could go first. I don't think I'm going to say anything that Liam and Fareed haven't heard already. So I'm happy to see if other commissioners have any comments. Wait for ten seconds and then I'll speak. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Hager, please go first.
Thank you. You said something earlier about there being like a contingent of employees who really strongly do not want to leave their affiliation with the police department. And I was wondering if you could kind of parse that out a little bit for us and potentially provide arguments on both sides.
Sure. So one of the functions that are being considered for a potential move into a new Burke dot is parking enforcement. And so parking enforcement currently sits within the police department. I think the number is about twenty-four parking enforcement officers are with the police department and do parking enforcement, obviously. And I think the number is around twelve of them showed up for public comment at one of our commission meetings to strongly oppose being moved out of the police department. The reasons that the parking enforcement officers gave, I'd say, fit into a couple of different buckets, very related buckets. One was affiliation and an appreciation to be affiliated with the police department. And then the second was safety, that there was a sense that being members of the police department was helpful in, in just them keeping safe and getting through their workdays without, and through some unsafe situations.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'll go ahead and do some. Oh, no, Commissioner Lindheim, you go first.
So, so I appreciated your comment that just moving people for the sake of moving people doesn't really buy anything. I've been through a gazillion reorgs, and all changing flags does is change flags. And so I appreciated that. I'm unclear to what extent creating a Burke dot does more than just change flags. Obviously, it creates a new infrastructure at the department director's level and, you know, probably costs another million dollars a year to the city. But I don't know what particular, I'm curious as to what you see as the particular function that's gained by elevating transportation to the department level. My, my other question, and then I'll let you answer both of them. You mentioned that you weren't clear what might happen at the state level. State level, therefore, you didn't really feel comfortable planning for what would happen at the state level. Have you detailed what should happen at the state level so that our electeds can put those kind of, put that kind of legislation together? Because without Berkeley at that moment, or Berkeley and one or two other cities, nothing's going to happen. So I wondered to what extent you've created a term sheet of what you think is necessary for this to take place. And then the third question is, do you think it makes any sense for this to take place?
And first, let's take the second question. The, we have not yet shared a detailed plan with our legislators that could turn into policy. That could be something that the task force recommends be a part of our next actions. And obviously, that would be something that the council would have to approve in terms of advocacy at the state level.
But let me, let me just follow just on that point. So you obviously believe that there are certain impediments under current state law.
That's correct.
And I wonder what those impediments are so that people who might want to change those impediments could change that, regardless of whether it makes sense to proceed from your point of view.
Hey Liam, Liam, maybe if you want me to take some of the heat off Bren, if you're there and listening. I know you've looked into this issue. Did you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think that everything that Liam has said is, is accurate and, and reflects the, the state of flux that this area is in. It's, it's not, it's not a, civilian enforcement of traffic laws is not an area that has a precedent in California and the way that the statutes were drafted in the sixties and seventies don't account for that. And so there, we have concerns, but those concerns don't necessarily preclude the program from coming into existence.
I, I'm a little, I'm, I'm still a little unclear. I mean, I'm a little, I'm still a little unclear. I mean, my reading of state law is you can't do it right now. But I don't know if that's your reading of state law. And it's not clear to me what you think are the provisions in state law that impede you from proceeding with. This proposal, or at least amorphous proposal about civilian enforcement of traffic. And whether there's been conversation with the electeds about whether they're interested in pursuing something. Or are you just waiting until? I don't know, waiting until somebody says, go do it.
I think from a legal perspective, the direction from the council has been very clear. And so. There's not anybody waiting for for anyone to say, go do it at this time. And the council has in fact taken the position that the state should amend the vehicle code to make it clear that civilians can enforce. The provisions at the local level. I'm not sure that answers your question because. Sounded like you were talking maybe to.
I'm just curious whether you have told. The council or told somebody to tell your lobbyists to tell the. Electeds that these are the provisions of the state code that should be changed if you in fact want to do this. Because a lot of the conversation is very amorphous. And to me, it seems like there are very few provisions in the code that would need to be changed, they do need to be changed. But I don't know whether anybody has just laid out for. Whether the city attorney or you all or somebody what those provisions are that would need to be changed. And because, you know, a lot of people say, well, we should go do it. Well, obviously, at the moment, you. Actually, obviously, I don't think you can until you change the law. But I'm just wondering whether anybody is working with people to change the law if they in fact want to do this.
Yeah, let me recognize the the mayor. Who may have an answer for us.
Hi Dan. I'm listening to your meeting, really appreciate all the thoughtful discussion. Yes, we know what sections of the traffic code we have to amend, we have been in discussion with our lobbyists. We asked our assembly member and senator to carry a bill this year, there was a limit on the number of bills, so they did not carry it this year. Our intent is to ask next year and get get a bill introduced. Oakland is has expressed interest in joining. In sponsoring a bill and there may be other. Cities in California as well by that time.
Thank you. So. Director Garland, could you then respond to the other other questions?
I think the other question was around arguments for a standalone Burke dot. And I'm gonna pass it off to Freek, I think he had something he wanted to add on this discussion, but first. I think the two big arguments are one around vision, which is if the current vision or visions around our transportation. Programs are insufficient. Then it's about establishing that new vision. And standalone department might make sense to push that work forward. And then I think the second argument is around prioritization. It's this idea that a new department reporting straight up through a city manager elevates the issue of transportation and might. Make improved outcomes. Through that. Making more, making transportation a higher priority amongst the city, at least that's the argument.
I think before I go into that particular point, I also want to mention there's more legislation than just. Establishing unarmed enforcement. There's legislation that council has already lobbied for with respect to changing how speed limits are set. To give us more flexibility in how we set speed limits and introducing the possibility of automated speed enforcement. Which could take one of our primary collision factors that leads to significant injury and fatality. And take the personal interaction out of it. We've provided a lot of input and I think the current legislation and AB 550. Accounts for many of the things that we have been pushing for to make sure that by automating speed enforcement, you don't. Really drive up the economic violence associated with traffic enforcement in place of potential interpersonal violence. So being able to make it the. A civil violation instead of criminal violation. So rather than the court setting the citation level, the city could set the citations, we could waive them, we'd have a lot more flexibility. So I really appreciate all the effort council has put directly into that. And has been able to engage us somewhat in that. To the question of where a standalone department of transportation, and I will say even. Rebranded public works department into a department of transportation and infrastructure. Both of those will get you the benefit of. A shared vision. With a single point of accountability. So right now, the paving program is kind of split up. You've got engineering doing the pavement maintenance program. Where we do grind and overlay significant pavement projects. You've got operations. In a separate division focused on filling potholes and doing small repairs. You've got staff and transportation talking about, well, when you repave the street, we want bike lanes on it or not, we want to improve the crosswalks, all these different features. And people potentially working on different timelines and different, you know, direction. May not always be pulling precisely in the same direction. Now, saying that, I think we've gotten a lot better at it in recent years. We're not all the way there. So one of these reorganizations could potentially. Drive that even farther to more cohesive efforts. That said. If we go to a standalone department. One of the risks there is starting to break up into silos again where. I can say if we take. Pavement management sidewalks. Streetlights, traffic signals, all of those things lump them into a department of transportation. That's great. I can say that sewers are infrastructure because they really don't impact transportation, they're below the surface. Something like stormwater is both above the surface on the street surface impacting users and below. And we'd have to decide which department gets that. So. Those are the types of things we're looking at to figure out the pros and cons of the the different structures. But I think the the simple bottom line answer is, can you get a more cohesive vision? Through one of these structures and that's what's really going to push better safety and equity and racial justice in the delivery of transportation. Programs and infrastructure and policy. And that's really the goal that I think, you know, is driving us in asking why Burke dot and which Burke dot.
Commissioner Fine, sorry.
Hyde.
Mr. Goach, do you want to go now?
No, I was hoping to go after Commissioner Hyde and Fine. That's okay.
I just had one question. Where you talked about the 24 parking enforcement that would be moved. From the Berkeley Police Department, you said that 12 showed up and strongly opposed the move. And cited safety. And what I'm wondering is, what does that mean in terms of safety? Did they provide evidence in order to support that statement? And secondly, after Dan Lindheim mentioned it would civilian violations and potentially amending the legislation address some of the issues they may have raised.
So I'll speak to that briefly and Liam certainly can chime in, we're both there. One of the key things that they mentioned was they parking enforcement officers. Feel safer being on the same radio system as the police department. So in the event that they encounter. You know, aggressive response to issuing a citation, they can call for backup. I will acknowledge that you can have people in different departments on the same radio system. You know, but their their perception is that. You know, they're going to get more attention if they're in the same department. Well, that's certainly something that can be addressed. And so for us, the important thing was to listen to where their concerns are and try to figure out which ones we can address regardless of. Whether they move or not. And I think there's definitely some opportunity there and more listening to be done. And able to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hyde.
Thanks, that that first I should start with, that was a really helpful. Concrete and clear presentation. I think that's one of the better that has been brought to our task force. So I have to commend you guys, that was that was really good and helpful. So I have three, I have just one comment and then three questions. All you guys want them all at once or should I segue them?
I love one at a time.
Nice, so the comment is around the structure and and I get how huge a question that is and how many. Nuances there are to, you know, we're guessing about the things that could be a result of move A, B, or C. But it and but I would just add from a Berkeley citizen standpoint, this is one of those things that it feels like if we. Naval gaze too much on it and don't make a choice, fulfill that choice and then course correct. That yeah, we all worry that we're losing time. And it feels like just a big and important decision. So the the thing that you suggested moving to, I think, option A, which still doesn't close any doors and allows the freedom to go to B and C. That I can't tell which one is going to be best. But I really like, you know, just course making some moves and course correcting along the way. The the questions I've got are. So this is sort of a, I'm coming at Dan's, some of Dan's content in a different way. And I don't know if it's a premature question, but. Given what what we'd like to achieve in overall moving. Moving in moving violation enforcement elsewhere. Can one of you guys describe? And I, and I, we won't hold you to it because we know that this is all theoretical at the moment. Can you describe what the citizen of Berkeley's experience would be? And how it would be different in, you know, pick a pick a moving violation, running a stop sign or speeding? So that what what would be? Can you, can you explain to us how about how it would look? And then what like what top one or two things are going to be different from how it's handled now? And I see you're about to say something, should I say the third or should I hold that or the second?
Let's hold that because I'm gonna start an answer and then ask Fareed to jump in. I just want to say why it's hard to answer that question. And so the first thing is, there is not a civilian traffic enforcement unit in the United States. And so that 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 means it's it's hard to visualize what exactly that means in Berkeley, given where we're at right now. It's not like there's a great model internationally, at least that I've been made aware of. Although there's a sense that internationally, especially in. Countries where the prevalence of guns are a lot lower, that there might be a better models there. But that for me, at least, that's yet to be seen. And then the second part is around automated enforcement. It's hard to know how. How much of what we call enforcement might be automated in years? And then what's left over for an actual person to be involved either in patrol and a civilian or a non civilian. Traffic enforcement role. Freed, can you pick it up from there?
Sure. I think that we have the ability to do automated red light enforcement now. So that's setting up a system. There have been some challenges with it. In the past, it has taken a significant amount of. Police staff time to review citations before they're issued. Because even though it's captured by camera, it has to be reviewed. And then there's the appeals process and having to go to traffic court. And it'd be great if state law would allow us to have non sworn personnel do that reviewing and show up in court. I think that could drive the cost down and make it be something that could be managed better. When it comes to automated speed enforcement. The the legislation currently going through, if we can get Berkeley added to it for a city of our size. We would be authorized for something like 18 or 19 locations in the city that could have automated enforcement. From my perspective, if it were left up to me, I'd put at least, you know, a dozen or 14 of those in school zones. That's how many school zones we have currently with reduced speed limits. And to make them fair and equitable, because I want to change behavior, not just write citations. I would put speed feedback signs in advance of each enforcement point. So anyone approaching that zone gets fair warning. You will be cited if you speed. Every single time. And our hope is very few people get cited and those who did would remember and not do it the next time. If some of those zones are mobile and they got to move around, we could spread the benefit throughout the city. So there's a lot of those things to look at and we also want to look at. You know, not just blindly putting them where the data tells us is where we have the most violations and the most severe impacts. But talk to the neighborhood where we propose to do it. Because we want to be careful who we're catching. You know, it may be the people driving through or causing most of the trouble. But if we end up mostly citing the people who live there. That's that's something we really need to take seriously and consider what the consequences are. And engaging the community and getting their feedback is going to be a really important part of this. As easy as it sounds to just say, hey, we'll do automated enforcement. I think we need to do it right. There's places that have done automated enforcement and it has failed. I think we've learned a lot from that, we can do better.
That's great to hear. That was my second question was on the automated enforcement. Do we get significant pushback from citizens and and is there a mechanism for. Members of a neighborhood or just general public to weigh in on that? Maybe that's already been done and I've not been clued into it at any rate. So so that's one question about automated feedback and also is Berkeley ahead or behind on automated enforcement?
To the extent that we're engaged in the conversation, I think we are ahead of some locations. Many cities have not done red light camera enforcement, we have, so we have, you know, some hands on experience with that, staff who are involved in that process. But then again, we don't currently have an active automated enforcement program, so in that respect, we're behind. I think there's, you know. Both apply here. And. I feel like I'm missing part of your question, if you want to.
Yeah, just compared to similar sized municipalities across the US. Are we super behind then? Is it because we've had a lot of citizens saying, no, don't do this? Or just it hasn't been discussed and and really deeply considered yet.
Gotcha. We have not had a lot of people saying, no, don't do it. In recent years, it's all been hypothetical, but the conversation about how we would do it if we resume. Or are able to start automated speed enforcement has generally gotten. Positive feedback and people have raised issues that I've tried to incorporate into our vision for how to do it. When we did red light camera enforcement. We really didn't get a lot of the pushback that many cities got from the sense of it being a money making effort. Or that we, you know, timed the margins so small that, you know, people were, you know, getting cited for violations when they didn't think that they'd run the red light. Our policy was give people a fair margin for error. Treat them fairly because we're we're not in it to make money. There are cities who said, hey, we're going to do this because it'll make money and we're going to spend the money on these things. And, you know, that's not something we've done. And I think that that would be the worst possible way to start a program like that because it. Kills public confidence in what you're trying to achieve. Our goal is purely improve public safety, reduce severe injuries and fatalities to zero, that's vision zero.
Are license plate readers part of the automation thing?
License plate readers are part of the automation for parking enforcement already. And we've got significant. Policies in place to protect privacy. For example, the data from license plate readers that transportation gets to see is already scrubbed of identifying information and it's all anonymized. So we're getting numbers and quantities, but not who.
Sounds good. The final thing is not really a question for you guys, but in terms of racial justice overall in Berkeley. It has occurred to me since day one that there's a lovely density of trees that make a neighborhood feel nice in the. Towards the, as you move towards the hills and there's a dearth of trees as you go towards the water. And it's not in. And um it's not in your bucket, but you know, wh- what about adding some trees to make all neighborhoods feel better, easier to breathe, all that stuff? Um, a thought on racial racial justice and racial equity.
Liam, do you wanna comment on uh the work Scott's doing with all the tree plantings in South and West Berkeley? I know he's got a major grant initiative that he's advancing on behalf of the city to address that issue.
Yeah, David, thanks for the quiz. Um, I I can't recall the um uh the uh grant amount, but it's a significant ma- amount of money uh to plant new trees uh primarily uh in western portions of South Berkeley uh in locations where there is not currently a street tree. Um, so yeah, it's gonna be great news for the city in terms of improving canopy, um uh proving the quality of air in those neighborhoods. Um, big step forward. I believe implementation of that is in the next um uh twelve months or so.
And and I'll get more information out to you, Pamela, so you can uh learn about uh the great work that the Parks and Rec Department has done around equity and tree plantings.
That is so good to hear. Thanks, guys.
Rachel Goes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you, um Liam and Fareed for being here. Nice to see you. Since we only have T C meetings every other month, I don't get to see you that often. I am very thankful to see some of the comments that we've been making, make it into a presentation. Um, especially, I think, things like economic violence, like just a recognition of that from a fines and fees perspective. Um, seeing that up there as part of the definition of inclusive safety, I think that's the kind of cultural shift we're looking for. As far as I can remember, we haven't seen that kind of language being integrated. You know, at that top level to understand um all of the ways in which people might feel unsafe in in the city. So after saying that, I'm gonna repeat some of the comments you both might have heard, but for the benefit of my other commissioners, a little bit to give them context for what we're looking at. One comment that you've heard many times is every time you define cost and how much things cost and the risks, you talk about risk and cost. I feel like I've always reminded all of us that the risk and the cost of not changing things is quite high. And we have heard so many of these issues over and over again from our community. It's not that we didn't the reason we're sitting here is not because we didn't know that these issues didn't exist. The reason we're sitting here is we finally have momentum and political will to make it happen. So I don't wanna pretend that we haven't known about um the issues connected to traffic violence or police violence. So so I just wanna start off with that. The second thing is with commissioners asking and the mayor, you know, having to speak up where I would expect you all to be able to say that, you know, the city city council is already working with folks at the state level to change the law. What I wanna hear from y'all the next time is we have to be in a proactive position. We're in an, we're not a a passive participant in this. Uh, Burke dot was, you know, Berkeley was the first place where we made the connection between racial justice, traffic enforcement, uh traffic stops. We cannot be passive. If you're looking for our advice on what you should be researching, when somebody's asking us, you, the question of what does it look like? That's the kind of research I expect the city to be doing. Um, I don't expect the city to be doing necessarily an opinion poll of citizens on Burke dot and and the bureaucratic uh ness of it. I'll co- I'll come to that later, but I expect our department, the the money or spending on a consultant to bring us that kind of knowledge, to look at other places and other disciplines where things have been done from a restorative justice perspective. Iceland, for example, has more guns than the U S, but they have an unarmed um police force, actually. A- as far as I can recall. So there are examples out there and just because it hasn't been done before, doesn't mean we we should, we we know that, we know that what's being done is not working for us. It's not working from a racial perspective, right? So we need to be proactive. If you're gonna, if you have the dollars, please spend it on doing that kind of research and educating us and the community, not asking uh opinions about what Burke dot should be. I mean, this is a two-way street. We need to be learning together. The next thing is, I think, on the parking enforcement and parking enforcement officers not wanting to be part of Burke dot currently. I think that's a red flag for all of us, that folks who do parking enforcement on our streets feel unsafe. How important are the dollars that we're getting from parking enforcement, that it's okay for us to put people in these positions where they feel unsafe? Why are they having these altercations? Why are they having to call police? I mean, I I want evidence of how often this happens. I asked the police chief this a few, a couple of meetings back. I haven't uh heard anything back. I I would like to hear how much of this is based in in reality. But that being said, the perception um of folks doing this job is also important to me and their safety is also important to me. And no amount of parking dollars suggests to me that they should be put in that position. So that's the kind of thing that we wanna change, that culture change that comes with Burke dot, you know, with in our transportation division, we've worked really hard to wean the city away from this idea that parking dollars are meant to go into the general fund and be a revenue stream. That's not how we do parking in the city. Not everybody might be aware of that. We do parking in the city to make sure that we have uh the supply of a limited resource. We don't do parking in the city uh to fill our coffers. Do our parking enforcement officers know of that culture that is within transportation division? That's the kind of thing we're trying to bridge. They should never be in a position where they feel unsafe. Uh, that being said, I think the other big red flag which um the subcommittee uh and Commissioner Prolik brought up, it's very disturbing that so much of B P D's diversity numbers are met by parking enforcement officers. How is that okay? How is that something we put in a report with no reflection? It's it's just stated matter of fact that their diversity numbers will be affected. I- it it continuously shocks me. Some days I wake up and I'm like, did they just say that? Did they just put that out there? How is that okay? B P D officer or whatever should be doing its own job of not relying on uh our parking enforcement um team to make their numbers look good, because the diversity of patrol officers, people who are in contact and stopping folks is is absolutely critical that they get more diverse. So I'm glad you're having conversations, but, you know, I I would like to understand a little bit more but one, when you're having these conversations about the difference between perception and reality and how we can change our parking policies to avoid these kind of interactions that parking enforcement officers are having. And it's, it is, again, the best example of why it shouldn't be under B P D. And thank you Fareed for saying that they can be on the same radio uh frequency. And if you need to be within B P D to get B P D to respond to you, then what is a citizen supposed to do? Is a citizen supposed to be in the same location in the office to get a response from B P D? Is that how it works? Because if a parking enforcement officer is calling with a problem, B P D shows up. And if you're prioritizing it differently, then, you know, let let's fi- figure out how things get prioritized when calls are made. Um, on automated enforcement, I wanna make a few clarifications. So when we're talking about automated enforcement, red light cameras are allowed. Automated uh speed enforcement is currently not allowed under state law. There's a bill right now that's looking not just at cameras, but different kinds of automated speed enforcement, because speed is one of the biggest causes of traffic violence, so it's absolutely imperative that we find a way to figure it out. Having police at every corner, giving out tickets for a week at a corner, tha- that's not gonna help solve it. What actually solves it is redoing our streets, but that takes a long time. Uh, or, yeah, takes longer, so automated speed enforcement can be a stopgap. And that bill, uh, I think that, I think David Chu is is forwarding that they are trying to engage with the process that makes sure that racial justice advocates, privacy advocates are all involved in creating a pilot, and I think Berkeley should definitely be part of that, and we should engage with that again proactively. If, you know, I had brought up earlier in this conversation that when I heard about the written consent form, I had a gut reaction that that was just not not a good thing. And I think similarly with with automated speed enforcement or cameras, people might have that kind of reaction. But I think we're learning that there might be nuanced ways to do this and we should do it as a stopgap measure. So I think that's a conversation that I would encourage our commissioners here to engage wi- with in that sort of nuanced manner and not necessarily have sort of a knee-jerk reaction to it, because it has been proven to reduce speeds. On the matter of these departments, I will say, who does the police chief report to? The police chief reports to the city manager. In a city like Berkeley where sixty percent of our emissions comes from transportation, where we still have people dying on the street or suffering severe, severe and fatal collisions. And as much as we are doing better than other cities, that's not, I'm I'm not here to compare our record. I'm here to say, let's be the best. So if you can think for a moment, you go out into the street and I'm gonna channel Karen Perelak, who says this really well, when you enter our public sphere, you should be able to float through it. You should not have to worry about tripping. You should not have to worry about being hit by a car. You should not have to worry about, you know, running across the street because the light is is changing. You, if you're driving, you should not have to worry about hitting a child, because a child cannot control where they might run into. That's the kind of world we're trying to create. And if you wanna do that, we are pushing for that kind of accountability to be at the same level as we expect of B P D, for example. So that's why we keep pushing for a direct line to the city manager, because we have seen in our experience, when we don't have that, simple things get delayed. So if you can show me that the simple things, you know, Liam, I would love to hear from you, not today, but what things you think are working, because I would actually like a list of the things that you think are working. The last thing I'll say is, I know that Liam, I'm I'm grateful to you for taking this on. I know it's, you know, it's it's a difficult thing to be in a job for ten months and have the thing that you were brought in to completely shift. So I definitely wanna acknowledge that, that it's not a, it's not an easy thing to be asked to do this work. But we're with you and we hope that we can make this change together, right? You you have interested people here with resources. We're not just talking, we're not just asking you to do stuff, we're also doing the work. So um I'll end with that and I look forward to Commissioner Letts' first comments.
Commissioner.
Great. Thank you. So actually, if it's okay, I just wanna take a quick moment, a personal privilege to ask to say, um Abby, I just wanna say thank, thank you for being here and happy birthday to your child. I just want everybody to remember that this was the meeting that Abby said she might not be able to come to because it was her daughter's birthday. Thank you to your daughter and thank you to you for being able to be here and be present. Um, you know that that's hard, so.
Thank you, Liza.
And she's still awake or I don't know if she is.
I asked, I asked her if I could, I could uh request for everyone to sing and she was like, I don't want that attention.
Happy birthday to her.
Thank you.
Um, and awkward transition, but um so um, thank you so much for being here, Liam and Fareed. It's good to see you again. I know I've already um put in a lot of input and I do wanna just say, you know, when this first came to the Transportation Commission, it was um, it needed a lot of work. You put in a lot of work. It came to the Public Works Commission. You put in a lot of work. Um, it needed a lot of work, more work, you put in more work and it's it's starting to look really good and I really appreciate all of what you've been putting into this. And I do have some like comments and a couple questions, I suppose. Um. So one is just kind of on like the scope of what would be contained in Burke dot. Um, and you know, you listed out all of the transportation staff and some of the other in the transportation division and some of the other transportation-related staff, and then you listed out the Traffic Bureau and you listed, I believe, the seven um officers who are in the Traffic Bureau. And that's great. And I know that um Commissioner Prolik thanked you for doing that, but I want to remind everybody that in um the city auditor's presentation, that um we actually saw that twenty-five percent or twenty-four percent, a quarter of patrol officers' time is spent on traffic as well. And this is, and the Patrol Division is a huge, much larger than the seven people in the Traffic Bureau. I don't remember exactly. Officer McGee may know, but I I don't remember. It's it's like hundreds of people and if a quarter of that time is spent, you know, that's like, you know, fifty people or something. So when we're talking about traffic staff, we're also talking about all of the patrol officers who are performing traffic-related duties. So that's one important item in terms of staffing that I think is important to incorporate. Um, second, you talk about non-sworn officers and list out the um the crossing guards. Also a reminder that all of the, any, under the data analysts who are working on collision data on um, you know, especially on collision data or other things related to that, those are also some non-sworn officers who may be doing data analysis related to traffic. Um, a quick just note, and I just really wanna say this as a, as someone who has been a Safe Routes to School parent champion for the last five years, no one knows that B P D is who runs the 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 school um crossing guard program. So the idea that taking that out of B P D like severs a tie between the school community and B P D, like I've talked to hundreds of parents and no one has ever known that B P D does that. And so I just wanna be that that, I I would recommend taking that out uh the, from the report. It's just not a thing that people in Berkeley think. Just another thing that I do think is important um in the report in terms of staffing is that the that the parking enforcement officers, I wanna second what um Commissioner Goch said about like really needing to take care of their safety. I also want, you know, them to be aware of what else is done. You listed a couple cities in the report that have parking enforcement officers in um outside of B P D, outside of the P Ds and in their transportation staff. You notably left out both Oakland and San Francisco, you know, our two big largest neighbors. They do not have they have both their parking enforcement officers and their crossing guards are in um recently, and that's just a quick note, recently Oakland did bring their crossing guards. I think in the report it said they were considering it, but they have done that. So when you give the cost estimates of the standalone Burke dot as being like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to form and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ongoing costs, I would challenge you, especially, maybe not around the formation, because I understand there's a lot of organizational change that would need to happen. But when you're talking, if you're really thinking about bringing all of that in, which is what I think advocates would like to see happen into a standalone Department of Transportation, that cost estimate of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars ongoing a year needs to be compared to what taking all of the transportation-related costs are and all of the transportation-related costs in the in B P D are, including patrol, including data analysis, including all of that. So I think a comparison of like, you know, because you can't just say, oh, it costs this much, because what are we comparing it to? And my guess is that um it's, it costs a lot under B P D. Let's see. Uh, next is, I do just wanna like, again, um lift up a couple things, which is, I really, again, support, as Commissioner Goch said, like an overhaul of the parking program and how violation violations are issued and how fines accrue. We know that that can be like just devastating and life-altering for some people. Um, and I really am just glad, very, very glad to see that in the report. I also want to um really support the recognition that there needs to be an expansion of the Vision Zero program staff. Um, so thank you for also including that in there. Just a couple of comments on the, on the like organizational. I, I hadn't considered it, but I really support what the Transportation Commission was saying in terms of housing the racial justice component in like an office of racial justice. But I, I definitely don't support it being like a separate thing within a department of transportation. I think sidelining it and saying it's like a separate division with two staff or whatever. That seems like a recipe to fail. I've seen it happen in institutions that I've worked in. Like not having accountability run throughout the entire department, but rather having someone to the side, just, it doesn't usually work out. And a, a comment on the, you know, these kinds of options A, B, and C with Burke Dot. And I, I really fully support moving forward as quickly as possible into a standalone Department of Transportation. I think that the phased approach is good in some ways, but I actually have really grave concerns that if you create something called Burke Dot, which is really just a renaming of the Transportation Division, that it's really easy to be like, oh, done, we're done, we did it, we created a Department of Transport, or a DOT, Division of Transportation or whatever, and we're done. And that, that's not the intention behind the council resolution. And I, I really have grave concerns about, you know, be, doing that. I also think that it just really doesn't allow for, I, I fail to see kind of how both options A and also option B, the Burke Dot, how that really allows all of the police related transportation roles to fall into a Department of Transportation. It's hard for me to see how all of traffic enforcement, how, or the vast majority of traffic enforcement, how all of parking, how collision analysis, how all of that, that doesn't seem to fit into a Burke Dot either. That seems like it, it really needs to be elevated. And you keep talking about how our own Department of Transportation does more than other similarly sized cities. Well, let's let it do more. Let's let it be its own, you know, freestanding thing, especially if we're going to add to it. On the note of moving on to that phased approach, I just have a couple of comments about the specific, and one, one question, specific items outlined in the phased approach. The first is on that, and this is what I mentioned to the chief earlier, that, that coordinating on BPD with precision policing. I again strongly state that I do not think that, that's an extremely low bar coordinating. Like this should be led by transportation staff, the decision about what safe, what it constitutes safety. This is, you know, this is what transportation planners and engineers are trained to do to really understand this. And, and, and you have looked at the data. And so I guess one question I have is, what is the status of data sharing between BPD and Transportation Division? Because when the Vision Zero plan started, that you, there was not even ability to access the collision data. And it was months and months and months of, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that, that we, that you all ended up using publicly available data because you couldn't even get data from BPD. And so Commissioner Lindheim, to speak to some of your questions about what's the point of this, right? There is a fundamental, like, back and forth between what is, what constitutes safety? And so what are we enforcing against? And also what is causing these collisions, which is what transportation engineers and planners understand? And how can we prevent them? And unfortunately, right now, BPD is doing the looking at the, what's causing the collisions. And they're looking at it from a criminal perspective, which is appropriate. But there are also engineering perspectives. So I guess I'm wondering, what's, what, from your perspective, if you could share, what's the status of data sharing between BPD and Public Works at the moment?
I would say it's definitely improving. I, I don't feel like we're a hundred percent there. I don't want to say it's done by any means. But as a sense, you know, we've had conversations around, you know, as soon as you, you know, BPD finished an accident or, I'm sorry, collision investigation report, send us a copy of it. They have monthly documentation that they do internally for significant crashes. And they've agreed that as they enter that data, they will send us a, a copy of that summary data so that we have it as soon as they do. With respect to the horrible crash last week on Marin Avenue, they've engaged us in helping to build the information about, you know, what's the grade of the roadway on Marin Avenue. So just today, we provided them with information about what's the grade on a block by block basis from the circle all the way up to Grizzly Peak. That's not something that typically happened before. So I think the, part of the answer to your question, I think the communication channels have substantially been enhanced. The regular coordination meetings that Liam and I have with the chief, I think have been very fruitful. And that I have had with Lieutenant Tate, who's the, the new lead for the Traffic Enforcement Bureau within the Police Department. I think that is all making a big difference. Having had them engaged in the development of Vision Zero made a big difference in getting that started, but I think we're going beyond that. It, it, it's going beyond strategizing and developing policy to actually figure out how to implement it and, and make it operational on a day to day basis. So again, absolutely a work in progress. Not anywhere close to being ready to call it done, but I, I've seen it really improve substantially.
That's good to hear. Do I, I have a question. I do have a couple more comments, but do we need, do I, do we need to make a motion to extend the meeting a little bit?
We do not.
We do not, okay.
If I can interject real quick, I can answer your question. Liza, about the number of officers. From roughly two in the morning until eleven in the morning, there's ten officers, if we are fully staffed, there's ten office, ten patrol officers on duty. From eleven AM to two AM, there's twenty patrol officers on, on duty. And I'd have to take a closer look at that, that number of the twenty-four percent that you mentioned to provide further analysis and feedback of that number. But that's the, the number of active patrol officers if we are fully staffed. And I would say right now, we're trending at being under that number on a regular basis.
Okay, so like, if fully staffed thirty officers a day and then, you know, take twenty-five percent of that is approximately amount of time spent on traffic related duties. I mean, that's what the auditors, you know.
That would be less, less than, it would be twenty officers total.
Okay, well, I do, I mean, I, this can be worked, but I do think, you know, in those numbers that you all are looking at, I do think, thinking about the, the time that's spent right now on traffic from patrol officers is something that's critical to consider. Thank you, Officer McGee. Let's see, I do have just a couple other comments and I'll try to be quick. Like Commissioner Goche, the idea of these public opinion surveys, I do think that public, that, that public engagement is critical. And I do just want to like remind everyone that it keeps being said on the agendas and stuff that, that the Burke Dot proposal was a referral to the city manager. And if you actually go back to the omnibus measure, it specifically says, refer to the city manager, the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget process and the proposed community engagement process to reimagine public safety. So this, the public engagement, like, please let's not forget that Burke Dot is part of this. But I do, I think like opinion polls, it's a little complicated. I think like some listening sessions, understanding what communities' concerns are around traffic safety in their neighborhoods. And then also an opportunity to provide education. So as again, as a public health person, you know, COVID is, like, COVID vaccines are certainly like a good example, right? We want to hear what are your concerns in the community about this? And we want to provide you with the information about like what the, what people, what we know, what the data show, what other cities have experienced, bring in people, talk about it. That seems like a more productive community engagement process than opinion surveys. Because the truth is, like, I think you all know, Fried and Liam, that like just asking people, what do you think causes, you know, crashes in Berkeley? It's like, everyone's like, ah, it's like, you know, speeding bicycles or whatever. And it's like, that's not right. Like you actually look at the data and that's not, like, it's maybe scary when a bike whizzes past you, but that's not what's actually caused. So like some, some data driven stuff and some information. That seems like a more useful public engagement strategy. And then, let's see, the, the action plan, the like internal look action plan. I think there are elements of that that I like, but I'm also really hesitant to have another plan. Like our city, like when you were presenting, Liam, you were like, there's the best plan and the Vision Twenty Fifty Plan and the PED Plan and the bike plan. And it's like, let's not, let's like, let's do something other than have a plan. Maybe what I would recommend if you're hiring a consultant is I actually think what's really critical right now is maybe like an organizational change consultant, which actually I think could really help both with this transition around Burke Dot and also like help understand what it is about the internal workings of the Transportation Division that require this hard internal look. And what are things that can be done to move this forward in a more racially just, better way? So I, I think rather than the action, like I would recommend it, yeah, some organizational change consulting. And then finally, and this is actually the biggest thing, is that this hesitancy to wait until, and this speaks a little bit to Commissioner Lindheim, what Commissioner Lindheim was saying, and also Commissioner Goche, rather than wait for legislation to happen and say, oh, we're going to do state level advocacy to push change. Burke Dot is, like, Berkeley is, all eyes are on Berkeley around this issue, around removing, around allowing civilian enforcement of traffic violations. Like all eyes are on us. And if we are sitting back and waiting or even just saying, yeah, we want legislation and up, the advocacy that we need to do is being visionary in how we're going to do this. And, and like Commissioner Goche said, you know, this needs to come from within city staff. What would it look like if someone pulled you over who was civilian? What would, that's what we need to, we need to create that story and tell that story. And that is the advocacy. We need to get out there in front of it because we're going to get left behind and what we value as a city is not going to get incorporated into this unless we're actively pushing it. And not just pushing for there to be legislation, pushing what the legislation looks like. So that delay of like, let's wait and see what happens and then we can react, like, no, we need to be out in front of that. So that's all. Thank you for indulging me.
Commissioner Fine.
You're muted, Commissioner.
Oh, Commissioner, you're muted.
I've just been taking a lot of notes. I'm not a traffic person. I'm more somebody on the mental health, substance use and policing piece. But what's occurring to me is that even though we've seen these police presentations, that the personnel is not being unpacked in a way that's really identifying what's criminal and the police should be pursuing and what's not. And now, in addition to the calls that go through dispatch that we learned about and the data analysis from the city auditor, tonight I'm learning about twenty-four, I guess, officers that would go to the traffic in parking enforcement. And then there's twenty-four percent more within the patrol officers that are spending time on traffic. And so I know we saw the organizational chart, but I'm not really clear exactly what people are doing in terms of their duties on the job. And how do we sift that out so people are focused in policing on criminal? And this other thing is completely unpacked in a way that we come to common understanding.
Just briefly on that, because I think, you know, maybe we take some of the information for granted, but the parking enforcement officers are not sworn officers. They are not armed. So parking enforcement is already a civilian activity. It's just housed within the police department. You know, so far as going, wearing uniforms is involved. My parking meter maintenance staff wear uniforms as well. They're not armed either. They have no reason to be. There, there's the four traffic enforcement officers who focus pretty much exclusively on enforcing traffic violations. So they, you know, that's their, their primary job. And then the, so then the data about the twenty-four percent time, which I'm not familiar with, is just the patrol officers, as has already been discussed. But I think we can try to be more clear about that division of how much traffic enforcement is happening across, you know, the whole of the police department.
Commissioner Hargre.
Thank you. I would like to second what Commissioner Fine just said. I think that it is still unclear the exact functionality of the police department when they're deployed on beats and when they're doing on the ground policing. I was hoping that that would get clarified by the chief today, perhaps in her next presentation it will be. But it seems like perhaps we should draft some questions that we can really get to the heart of that rather than having to wait to see if she'll get there on her own. And then additionally, I'd like to second pretty much everything that Commissioner Letzker said, particularly underscoring this idea of like, having the Department of Transportation or not a Department of Transportation sitting within the police, not separating it out, to me does not really speak to the intentionality of the omnibus legislation, which in my eyes was about trying to reduce the footprint of policing, trying to find other ways to keep our communities safe. And so it seems to me that having a separate department is the only way to truly speak to that, that part of the omnibus legislation.
And if you'd like to prepare questions, I can forward it over to the chief. Or if there's a clarification that I can write right now, I'm more than happy to try to clarify any confusion.
Perhaps we should get questions together if that seems better to my fellow commissioners. I'm trying to read the room. It's hard over Zoom.
No worries. I think really, really quickly, it's, there's officers on patrol and then there's parking enforcement officers that are with our traffic division. So there's some differentiation there. Patrol officers are responding to the community demand, the community calls for service. Parking enforcement officers are focused on patrol and they assist us in providing scene security or for example, in the collision on, on Marin, providing some like perimeter and then they'll assist us with those sorts of activities throughout their shifts.
Thank you, and Commissioner Goche.
Yeah, I, I think what Officer McGee just talked about, brought up, one of the questions I did have, which is this, I, I, I think what we're trying to all parse is, are the right people doing the right job? And you know, this isn't necessarily a question for Liam or Fried, but this is a question that Liam and Fried, you should be asking and we should all be asking is, who's doing what and how much is it costing us? Right? Because we don't really need, oftentimes, one police officer to be doing traffic management at an event, right? Which is what I'm reading in your report. So I think those are the kind of things we are trying to understand is, even you, you missed the chief's presentation, but some of the comments that were made made us think that you all were not coordinating as much as we would like. So just so you know. So just so you know, um, but like if I, I, I think like seat belts, for instance, it's not a criminal violation as far as I understand. It's probably a civil violation of some kind, uh, should not need somebody, should not need a sworn officer to hand out a ticket for something like that. Again, I'm not sure of these things myself, but these are the questions I have. And I'm interested in learning both from BPD and from y'all, because that's the only way we'll be able to spend the city dollars in a way that is effective and efficient and honors people's skills, um, and knowledge, so they can be applied correctly. And right now it doesn't seem that way. And that might be because as other folks have said, everything that we wanted to do or not wanted to do has gotten sent to the police department. So yes, the traffic bureau might, might know more. But the, the leadership and the guidance they're getting isn't necessarily from folks who understand what kind of enforcement we want as a city. And then again, you were not aware of the auditor's data that, uh, as I was talking about, which is showing that 25% of the time of patrol officers is spent on what, what is categorized under traffic stop. So what's going on there? I mean, this is what we expect you all to be looking at and, and, and learning about and teaching us, uh, even as we're asking these questions, right? Uh, in your internal sort of working groups that you all have, um, that's what we expect for you to be learning about, I think. And I know that's hard, you know, I, I want to sort of say, uh, maybe the reason that why is communication better now? Communication can be better depending on a person. It has to be better because of a structure and a system. So even if that person leaves, it still works, right? And I think that's what we are trying to shift, not, not be at the mercy of whoever the person is on any, any side for us to do a better job. We, we can't truly afford that, uh, with, with our streets and people's lives.
Commissioner Fine.
I was just going to say briefly, I grew up here and that accident that happened on Marin happened in the late seventies. A 16 year old Abby Bella and her girlfriend, it was about late. They didn't have any gas in the car, the brakes don't work when you don't have gas, and thought they would just cruise down Marin and get home safely. And they flew off the grade and were both killed. Uh, I, I don't know if it's ever happened prior to what happened this past week, but Marin's always been a problem. So it's just really tragic. It happened again.
And we do have data for that through Vision Zero. So I know that within the last 10 years, we've had one severe injury of a driver and one severe injury of a cyclist. You know, that's something that in the past maybe wasn't as readily available, but we are getting that information. And, and I think that the comment about needing to have systematic good communication rather than just good communication with one person is important. We've had three traffic lieutenants in the past year. And I'm happy to say we've actually had really good communications with all three of them. And we're paying attention to it more, so that's kind of to be expected, but I want it always to be expected.
Thank you. Seeing their hands, um, Liam and Fried, thank you both, um, presentation and all the information. I know it's been quite a while since we met, but I, I know a lot of progress has been made since then. You know, I would, you know, it's already been stressed, so I'll keep it short. But you know, I do think us beginning that process, imagining what those stops look like, that, you know, navigating those realities, um, and how that might look, you know, in terms of actual legislation in the city, um, or wherever in the state. You know, there's a, you know, a pretty, a pretty good bill, um, that was in Florida, um, which you may already know, um, that really dived into, you know, what would a, an armed traffic enforcement, you know, system look like? How do you fit this in? You know, where do police fit in this equation, if at all? And, you know, making sure that's a part of that conversation. You know, part of the fear is right, like, I don't know if I will be here in 2025 to make sure this all gets done. I, I may be, um, other folks may be here. But reality is, we're going to need you and other folks in the city, um, to make sure that that discussion happens. Um, I know folks here will be do all they can to make sure it stays that way. But, you know, I know from my work on the mayor's working group, that, you know, things can be said to get done in this city. And some preliminary progress will get me. And then several years will go by and nothing will happen. And usually it's because, you know, either the imagination goes for the next step never happened, or, you know, something else came up. So, um, just entering that. But no, really, thank you. I know this is the law work. I know it's a whole new idea. You know, you know, I, I didn't even realize you had jumped in the job, right? When we started all this, but you know, thank you all for your work so far.
Ms. Mizele?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I see, uh, Commissioner Prolex hand up, and she might have some closing comments. And thank you for your comment.
Yes, uh, it's happy to hear from you.
She can go ahead and speak. She's in the, she's still a panelist.
Thank you. I, um, I didn't know if you were going to take public comment. So I just wanted to add one thing, not particularly on behalf of the transportation commissioner, but this is me speaking, having been part of that process is, um, I just want to really reemphasize, I think, something I heard a couple of times tonight, um, which is we have to envision public safety differently, right? Like that's what your commission is about, is envisioning public safety differently. And from the conversations we've had in transportation around this over the past couple of years, that means redesigning our transportation system differently. And that's, you know, Commissioner Lutzker mentioned earlier, when the BPD was talking, that it's about, um, it's about engineering first. How do we design a system where it's safe for a child to be out and happen to run into the street? Because that's what kids do. And then what role does enforcement play in that? And to me, that's where I heard, uh, Fareed and Liam both say, like, their decision about whether BURKDOT should be a separate department or not is about vision and prioritization. And I think this vision thing hasn't been talked about enough. Like it's the vision for public safety in the transportation realm, in our public realm, you know, our streets and on our sidewalks. Um, and that having, having the police department who are focused on enforcement, but don't understand transportation, being the ones to, to define what is the best way to enforce safety, rather than focusing on how do we design a safe system, which is what the transportation department does? And then how do we minimize any need for enforcement? And at the very last, like pieces of it, what are the enforcement pieces that are needed? Like that's why having a BURKDOT system and having all of those pieces, including enforcement, have to be part of it. You have to envision a different system than what we have today. And, and I, and I'm still just, we're just not seeing enough of that in the proposals that are being put forward. And I think it's really missing the, um, the city council's referral, which is to, which was to, you know, reduce, reduce the Berkeley Police Department budget in order to create partly along the list of things to do, create a Department of Transportation, um, to administer traffic laws. But who's, we need to talk about who's designing what laws are important in order to keep our places safe, right? Like, so that has to be a part of the design of the transportation system. And that's why I, I just think this BURKDOT department standalone has to be its own, its own department. Um, and just to, to last comment is on the silos. We already have silos. What we've seen on the transportation commission is the silos between transportation and the rest of public works has existed for, since transportation was brought into public works. We used to have a Department of Transportation in the early 2000s. It was brought into public works. Those silos were never taken apart. We've been working with them forever on it. As Fried mentioned, it's gotten a little bit better in, in recent years. But to me, the silo between BPD and transportation is no different than the silo between transportation and public works. And having a separate department is not going to change any of that. All of these departments have to work together. But having a department that can be prioritized at the level of the city manager direct, the city manager holding this department directly accountable and to have a vision for what public safety looks like in our, with, in our transportation realm, um, I think is super important. So thank you all for your work you're doing today.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lindheim, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to caution people about drawing too many conclusions from Jenny's data. Data, Jenny's data is really awful. It's a fantastic job. It is vastly better than the stuff that listed on the public, on the, on the open data site. She found probably five times more calls for service than had originally been there. But if you just do some really, really basic arithmetic, which I advise you all to do, that there were roughly, um, 8100 stops on average per year traffic. And if you divide that just by 365, that works out to be just over, somewhere in the vicinity of 2025 per day, which means on a per cop basis, at most, that's one per day. So obviously that doesn't represent what cops do. And so we don't have the data for what they do do. But I just caution you to not take that data as gospel because it's just by definition woefully incomplete. And it's not like she didn't do her best. She did a heroic job. But whatever it is about the calls for service, getting that out of the police computer system, it just doesn't represent what actually goes on. And so the question then becomes, okay, what does go on and what data should there be? And I don't know the answer to how the, the, the CAD system works in, in Berkeley. Um, and I don't know how you would get better data out of it. But just thinking about it and just thinking logically about it, just be careful of drawing too many conclusions from the data that's in that report. And, and Jenny herself is very cautious about the quality of that data. And, uh, so I just caution you and just do a little bit of arithmetic and see to what extent any of those categories, when you look at them on, just on basic arithmetic, arithmetic, make any sense. So I just caution, I just word of caution at this point.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Optin.
I want to, uh, offer a strong second to what Commissioner Lindheim has just told us. There's data and there's data. When people have control of data, they, uh, very often manipulate it in ways that benefit themselves and their departments and their superiors and their subordinates and don't necessarily, uh, benefit the public. Uh, so everything that Dan Lindheim has said is 100% correct. We really need to be very, very cautious about interpreting the data that we are voluntarily, uh, given. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And yeah, thank you, Liam. Thank you, Fareed. And we can move on to our last item, which is a reoccurring item for self community discussion.
Good morning, Chair.
Yes.
Chair, we have one member of the community that would like to speak.
Yes, uh, let's do it.
I'll bring in Emily Regusa.
Hey, thanks so much. Just on that point about the data, I really appreciate, um, particularly Commissioner Lindheim's comments. And for example, one thing Jenny pointed out was this doesn't take into account report writing. So I think making a generalization like this is 25% of how they spend their time is just not taking into account a lot of what their time is spent doing. And, um, and I am looking forward to hearing more from everyone after people maybe get a sense to take a closer look at what the data do show. Thank you.
Commissioner Fine. You're muted.
There is one more hand raised, uh, Chair.
Uh, my apologies. Was it, oh, let's go to public comment.
Kelly Hammergan, you're free to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I really appreciate what, uh, Dan Lindheim said at the very beginning about shifting the flags and having gone through many, uh, reorganizations. I have also been through reorganizations. And, um, it just feels like listening to this, that we're enamored with reorganization as solving, uh, the underlying core problems. And I have not, I, I really think that the task force, you're all doing a, you're really committed and doing the very best you can. But I just kind of feel like we're missing what is the core problem. And that's, um, the biased policing. And I, I haven't figured out how we're going to, how we are really addressing that problem. As a former manager, I always knew who my problem employees were, and they took up an enormous amount of time in, in counseling and discipline. So I'll just leave those words and I'll probably send you some information later. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And Commissioner Fine. Hi, you're muted, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm looking at the data that, uh, Dan Lindheim brought up on arithmetic. I would also say, like, if you look at mental health calls, well, the data doesn't look at substance use calls. And many of the people have co-occurring substance use, where we don't know what level of interaction with police and what the systemic responses are to people in order to determine exactly what's going on. And, um, I, I thought it was a heroic job, but you had 65, 650,000 calls. And I think it's very hard to be able to search a database thoroughly in that short period of time in order to get emerging themes that really indicate how people are spending their time.
Commissioner Lutzker.
Yeah, thanks. And Commissioner Lindheim, I definitely agree that there are, you know, issues with the data. You know, among the data that, that is, you know, all, all of the time that people, that was spent was accounted for. Report writing may not have been in there, but also keep in mind that traffic also requires report writing. Um, and so I'm not sure, you know, obviously we don't have the data, but it's not clear that the numbers would change hugely. They may, they may not. Um, I think like casting doubt on it, you know, being a little suspicious of it, I think it's fine. Do keep in mind that traffic stops alone accounted for well over all of the other events that ever, that are, you know, encountered. It was 44,000 stops, um, compared to the next category. And, and that, those data are, are accurate because those are just like the actual, you know, reasons for the call. So let's keep in mind that it is really important. And I do just want to speak, Commissioner Optin, I, I appreciate what you're saying that, that, you know, we have to be questioning the data. I am a little bit, um, I, I think saying that there was any manipulation based on, you know, agendas. I do just want to say that our city auditor, I think, looked at this data in an incredibly impartial and very clear cut way. And I just don't want that to be questioned at all. I mean, I think that she looked at it in a very, very impartial way. The data themselves have flaws, but I don't, I don't think that there was like a, I, I just really want to be clear I don't think agenda is what the issue is. I think the underlying data quality is what I'm concerned about. And I just want to say that I think that, uh, the city auditor did a really amazing job, given what it is and, and was presenting the data fairly, um, as impartially as possible.
Thank you. And I'll just caution commissioners at the time. Uh, Commissioner Optin.
I want to say I, I completely agree with, uh, Commissioner Lutzker about the impartiality and thoroughness of the city auditor's work. about the impartiality and thoroughness of the city auditor's work with the data. If there are problems with the data, it's not her problem. Her work with the data, it's, it's with the people who have collected the data themselves. And it's, it's not something peculiar and, and unique to law enforcement. People in many spheres make sure that the data they're collecting and making public helps themselves, makes them look good, or at least keeps them from looking bad. Law enforcement is a particularly sensitive issue or sensitive area with respect to data. But, but this is something that affects all of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindheim.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I'm not, I'm not calling into question anything that Jenny did. Like I said, I think she did a heroic job. I, I just caution, it's not just on the traffic stops, it's on all of the data. And the question is, does that make intuitive sense? And if it does make intuitive sense, then we probably need, you know, radically less staff. But I think there is a response, and I think we don't understand yet, have not been told yet, how police spend their time. And I'm really looking forward to hearing that. And, you know, I provided questions to the chief some weeks ago in that regard. But I do hope that the police do come back and tell us, okay, how is time spent? And because the arithmetic on all of the data from the calls for service doesn't give it, it, it doesn't make sense that way. And so, you know, just sort of if you do, you know, what each person could possibly be doing, it works out to being, you know, four or five incidents per day and per shift, and, and that just doesn't make intuitive sense to me. But maybe there's something we don't know. In any case, I'm really looking forward to hearing an explanation from the department about, okay, is this data reflective of reality or not? Why? Why is that? And, you know, and I hope we get that information. So anyway.
I was in response to that, I believe that's on for the second, I'm sorry, for the first meeting in June. We're going to come back and hopefully have some of these answers for y'all.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our last item, subcommittee discussion. I recommend we move past the item, and if there is a need for substantial discussion, probably better add another meeting where commissioners are all here and probably fully awake. So, or is there any comments at this time for subcommittee discussion? Okay, seeing no comments. Yeah, we finished subcommittee reports. Is there any final public comments? No public comments. Motion to adjourn. I'll be a second.
Who made the motion?
Technically, I can motion. You give it to Commissioner Gosh.
Commissioner Gosh first. Motion, make the motion.
I'll second the motion. Your danger field.
Danger field, thank you. Okay, ready, Chair Mizel? Call roll.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Chima. Commissioner Fine.
Yes.
Commissioner Dangerfield. You're on mute, Commissioner Dangerfield.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hi.
Yes.
Commissioner Hager.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindheim.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker. He's absent. Commissioner Gosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ajigu.
Yes.
Happy birthday to your daughter, by the way. Commissioner Optin.
Yes.
Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Polk. Commissioner Malvido.
Yes, and also happy birthday to your daughter, Commissioner.
Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Ho. Commissioner Lutzker.
Yes.
And Chair Mizel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Happy birthday to your daughter.
Thank you. Good night.